Night, this is the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, City County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Before we get started, if everybody can look at the screen above our heads here, this is a public hearing. This is a, there'll be presentations made, so the staff will make a presentation about each item tonight. The commissioners can cross-examine them, and then the applicants who are making the presentation will then make a presentation on their behalf. They have up to fifteen minutes. The commissioners will cross-examine them, and then when we get past that, then we go into the public part of this. So if the, anybody here tonight that has a representative or any individual that wants to, they have up to fifteen minutes, the opposition's representative has up to fifteen minutes, and then if we get down to individual public comments, we have three minutes. So if anybody has an individual comment, we have up to three minutes, and then at the end, the people, each person will make their closing argument. So just kind of clarify the rules, because there's a lot of people here tonight. This is new to many of you all. So we will enter into our meeting tonight. McKinnon, if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Cecil. Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Present.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioners, you have the minutes of our November the third meeting in your packets. Are there any questions? We'll call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cecil.
Abstain.
Commissioner Brown.
Abstain.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Abstain.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Abstain.
Commissioner Starks.
Abstain.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. In your packets, commissioners, we have our two thousand and twenty-three meeting schedule that you all have received, and the meeting dates, and Ben, I guess that calls for a motion, please. If that is agreeable with commissioners, we will approve our meeting dates for calendar year two thousand and twenty-three.
Second.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cecil. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Motion's approved. Megan, our first quarter budget, please.
I'll just have a quick summary for you guys for the quarter one budget. Everybody should have a copy of it in your packet. The easiest way for us to tell if we're on track so far for this year is to look in the year-to-date percentage of budget column. So I'm just going to go through that with you guys really quick. As you can tell, the first several were right on target with our NPO-related funds. We're a little bit behind on that, but that's typical for us. We will pick that up in the third and fourth quarter of this year, and if we skip on down, total income, we're at twenty-three point seven percent. Since we are at the close of the first quarter, that's exactly where we want to be. Those, everything should be close to twenty-five percent. If we skip on down a little bit further, for total personnel, we're at twenty-four point seven percent, which is right on track, right where we want to be. And if we flip to the second page, we'll go through our office, we're at twenty-eight point three percent there. We're a little bit high, but that's mainly because of recording fees, which, as you guys know, are a pass-through, so we'll make that up in the income. Contractual services, we're a little bit high on that one, but that is because our interns, we pay that one lump sum at the beginning of each year, so that will fall in line as we go through as well. And that brings us to our total expenditures, we're at twenty-two point two, which were a little bit under budget for the year, and we've had no capital expenses so far. That's pretty much it in a nutshell for the budget. Are there any questions I can answer for anyone?
Misses, any questions? Thank you, Megan. This does call for a approval, so we'd call for a motion for approval of the first quarter financial report.
Chair, I make a motion that we approve the budget as presented.
Second.
Chair Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cecil.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion's approved. Commissioners, in item number three, you have your subdivision and site development plans in your packets. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine letters of credit and performance bonds that were in your packets. Are there any questions regarding those? Hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
Some move.
Second.
Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cecil.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We now enter into our public hearing. Mr. Moore, if you would administer the oath, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. I request that you order that the record tonight include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications of each staff witness. And finally, I'd request that you administer the oath to each of those witnesses, please.
Elsewhere to tell truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. We now enter, we have no old business. Our first item tonight is two thousand and twenty-two eighty-two Z County. SVJG Development LLC has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately thirty point nine seven acres located at fifty-six seventeen Louisville Road from Ag to RM four, multi-family residential and highway business with a general development plan. There will be five commissioners voting on this, the four county representatives, and the one Plum Springs representative.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on August the twenty-fourth for the property in yellow, properties in yellow. The current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is agriculture. Future land use is mixed-use commercial and high-density residential. And just to summarize, the applicants are proposing to rezone in order to develop the property with a maximum of four hundred and eighty multi-family residential units and a mixture of commercial uses. The existing historic home and stone wall are proposed to remain, and the applicants did provide a site plan for your reference. Looking over at page number two, under the site characteristics and review, transportation infrastructure, the applicants are proposing two main entrances from US thirty-one W. KYTC did not prohibit two entrances to US thirty-one W, but did highly encourage the applicants to utilize only one main entrance from US thirty-one W. Looking at prime farmland, a large portion of the property is designated as prime farmland with the remainder designated as farmland of statewide importance. And this application complies with majority of the criteria evaluated in the site characteristics review, with considerations noted regarding the second entrance to thirty-one W, tree preservation, and prime farmland. Looking down under site design and compatibility review with the surrounding architectural features, this stretch of Louisville Road is comprised of a mixture of building types and styles ranging from one to two stories in height. The applicants are proposing a maximum building height of three stories for the RM four portion of this development. Looking over at page number four for the traffic impact study, a study was not required by KYTC or Warren County Public Works, however, they did provide a couple comments. KYTC, the developer shall install left and right turn lanes on Louisville Road. KYTC stated that one full entrance will be permitted and highly encouraged that the development contain only one main entrance. If a second entrance is installed, the second entrance shall be right in, right out only. From Warren County Public Works, the proposed roadway will require a sixty-foot right-of-way and shall include a commercial paving section per their subdivision regulations, dedicated left and right turn lanes onto US thirty-one W from the development entrance are required, and also the developer needs to allow for a public turnaround for vehicles not entering into the apartments. And the applicants have agreed to these requirements in DPC number five. That is the highway business portion of those DPCs. Moving along down to the development plan conditions, there are two sets for this. We'll start with the RM four portion. Number one, limits the development to four hundred and eighty dwelling units. Number two, limits building height to three stories and requires uniform design and color. Number three, addresses building materials. Number four, requires singular ownership and management. Number five, requires uniform lighting. Number six, the development shall include a community pool. The development shall contain internal sidewalks which connect to the sidewalks adjoining to the new public road. Number seven, deals with access. Number eight, all utilities shall be underground. Number nine, addresses sinkholes. Number ten, addresses open space. Number eleven, addresses tree preservation, and then that concludes the RM four portion. Now looking at the HB portion of the development, number one, no building shall exceed two stories. Number two, outlines the building materials. Number three, any roof level equipment will be screened. Number four, establishes hours of operation. Number five, deals with access. Number six, all new utilities shall be underground. Number seven, addresses sinkholes. Number eight, developers shall preserve the existing historic home and rock wall and incorporating the same into the development. Number nine, outlines the public street requirements. Number ten, addresses signage. Number eleven, addresses building orientation. Number twelve, outlines prohibited uses, and number thirteen, addresses tree preservation. Flipping over to the focus two thousand and thirty category review, staff evaluated twenty-two items for compliance, and I'll highlight a few of those for your consideration. LU one point one point three, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area, including the proposed building height for RM four portion of the development. The proposal may comply with LU two and LU two point one, if the planning commission deems the proposal to be high-quality development. The proposal may comply with LU two point three, point one, and TR two point one. That's in reviewing the proposal. KYTC highly encourage only one main entrance to thirty-one W, but the applicants are proposing two, one of which shall be a right-in, right-out only. The planning commission should determine compliance with LU two point five point one, and if the proposed development is compatible with the existing historic home. And the planning commission should determine compliance with LU two point one point four, PR one point seven, and C, NCR one point one point six. The applicants agreed in the DPCs for both portions of the development that the developer shall make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees, not within the building envelopes, vehicular movements, areas, and/or areas of utility placement. And the proposal may comply with HN one and HN one point three. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible in fill or improve the existing character and pattern of the development, including the proposed building height for RM four portion of the development. And lastly, the proposal may comply with HN two point one and HN four. The planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, and if the proposed development is believed to enhance theory of housing options in the area. Flipping back over to the points to consider, the maximum building height for existing structures along Louisville Road is two stories. The applicants are proposing a maximum building height of three stories for the RM four portion. KYTC highly encourage only one main entrance to thirty-one W, but the applicants are proposing two main entrances, one of which shall be right-in, right-out only. And the applicants agreed in DPCs for both portions of the development that the developer shall make reasonable efforts to maintain healthy and mature trees, they're not within building envelopes, vehicular movement areas, and/or areas of utility placement. The attached primary development plan shows that most of the trees located on the property fall within tree in these areas and will be removed to accommodate the proposed development. And lastly, a large portion of the property is designated as prime farmland with the remainder designated as farmland of statewide importance. So that is all we have for the staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Commissioners, any questions for Amy?
May I have one?
Yes.
The historic structure that's on the site, is it, do you know if it's on the National Register of Historic Places?
Yes.
Okay, it's official. Okay, all right, thank you.
A quick question, if I may, Amy. You said that the KYTC recommended only one entrance, but they're not prohibiting two entrances?
Correct.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for Amy? Thank you very much. Is the applicant here, or their representative?
Good evening, Chris Davenport, nine twenty-one college, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Good evening, everybody. This may sound familiar to some of you all. I actually presented this application in October, but we didn't have the right people hearing it. So I guess I made a good argument, but I made it to the wrong people. So we've got the right people here tonight. So again, if some of you, if it sounds familiar, it's because we've, at least I've presented it once. I will make, I'll emphasize, tonight is a flume night. You do have flume hearings before you. This is not a flume hearing. The request that my client is making is consistent with the flume. So the flume of this property is mixed-use commercial, the vast majority of it. It's got high-density residential in the back, and this development would be consistent with those designations. Few points I wanted to make, and then I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have. Obviously, the development's got commercial front in US thirty-one W. It's got the multi-family in the back. We have agreed to thirty-five percent open space minimum for that multi-family. Zoning ordinance requires ten percent, so that's a three-and-a-half times increase. I think that's notable. The building materials for both the commercial and the multi-family are limited to brick, stone, hardy board, vinyl, and soffits only. We've oriented the commercial structures in the front, and I would be remiss, Commissioner Starks, if I didn't reiterate, we are maintaining that home. So, and it is, sometimes when I'm before this body, we talk about a home just because it's been around since nineteen sixty, and you all have heard me say, I'm not sure that makes a home historic. This is actually registered. So even my skepticism probably wouldn't apply to this home. So they are maintaining it. It will be preserved along with that stone wall. Not exactly sure what they'll do with it yet, but they are obligated to maintain it and incorporate it in some fashion. Other than that, the multi-family's, it's got sidewalks, it's got a clubhouse, it will have a pool, it will have those amenities that this board has come to expect from development in our county. When I was here a month ago, I made the comment that I was happy to finally be bringing some development to northern part of the county. Since then, I've had another one that's come before you, it's been approved, so we're definitely seeing development demand in that area. I don't think anyone should be surprised by that, given some of the recent industrial announcements that have been made. So I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have about this particular development.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport?
So Chris, let's go over to the HB portion. The DPC number two has, it lists architectural panels, and this is probably not your client's intent, but it does leave it open to really entirely architectural metal panels for the entire building. It is hidden fastener, so it's a more attractive product.
Could... No, a hundred percent's not intended. So Commissioner Graham, if you have a maximum percentage of that, I'm sure Mr. Van Meter, who's here, could entertain that.
So how about if we just addressed the front facade, because that's going to be the most visible portion of that, and so let's say we limit it to, say, ten percent on the front facade. I don't have an issue with the rest of it, because it is hidden fastener. Is that agreeable?
Give me just a second.
Okay.
We can agree to that, Commissioner Graham.
Let me make sure I... No more than ten percent of the metal panels on the front facade.
Front facades will consist of no more than ten percent architectural metal panels with hidden fasteners.
And there's no limitations on the side of...
I believe that's what Commissioner Graham's asking.
So Chris, the last question is regarding the entrances. The, is the reason your applicant wants two entrances, is it because of the highway business to be able to get in and out there?
There's, and also the highway, and also the multi-family. So I'm not entirely sure, and I'll explain that in a minute, I'm not entirely sure why the transportation cabinet preferred only one entrance. They did say that they preferred only one, but if we did two, the second one had to be right-in, right-out only, which we've agreed to. Now, again, I'm not a transportation engineer, but I would hazard a guess, if I asked the same question of either the fire department or the police department, they'd probably prefer the second entrance, just for redundancy purposes. If you had an event, or an accident, or something that blocked that main entrance, you'd have a bigger problem on your hand if you did not have that secondary access point. And for those, that's probably one of the biggest reasons my client wants that. So the primary entrance obviously will be this entrance that will serve directly the multi-family. And when Amy mentioned the commercial standards and the sixty-foot right-of-way width, it's this main access point. We intend that will be the one that be used the most. This one would be right-in, right-out only. In any emergency where this happened to be blocked for some reason, you'd still have the ability, fire trucks, police cars, whoever, could still use this point here. So I guess it depends on perspectives, and ultimately, you all get to decide that.
Thank you, Chris.
Misses, any other questions for Mr. Davenport?
Chris, the turn lane was said for all the second entrances, so it had an offset turn lane, etc.
Let me make sure of that. Let me read the language. I know they require those turn lanes for the main entrance, Commissioner Brown. I don't think they required that on the secondary. It'll be in the HB portion. Yeah, so the qualifying language, Commissioner Brown, is with regard to the main access point. The developer shall install right and left turns into the development from US thirty-one That's not a requirement on the secondary. Of course, you would not have a left turn lane in, because it's right-in, right-out only.
If the transportation cabinet was to recommend a turning lane for that first entrance, is that something you would...
If they had recommended, we would already agreed to it, yeah. And I would, you know, I don't know, maybe Ben can answer this. I've never had an issue where they've demanded something after the fact they didn't demand on the front end. I don't know if that's even possible, or...
They still would have the opportunity to request that during the development review process, and of course, your concept does show the D cell lane on the right-in, right-out only also, so plus you, that section of Louisville Road has a wide...
Shoulder.
Wide shoulder anyway, so I don't think it'll be a problem either way.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Davenport? Before we, we will have the applicant...
Would you come up real quick? I'm going to swear again here, real quick.
Amy, an address, please, sir.
Shane Van Meter, twenty-nine oh three, Ewing Bend Drive, Bowling Green, four-two-one oh three.
Van Meter, you swear to tell the truth?
I certainly do.
Thank you.
Shane, did you hear the proposed restriction that would limit the architectural metal with hidden fasteners to ten percent of the front facades of the commercial structures? Yes. Do you agree to that restriction? Absolutely. Will you sign that when I give it to you? I will. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or an opposition to this request? Okay, hearing none. McKinnon, if you'd call the roll, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, we need, excuse me. We need a motion. Would somebody make a motion in a second, please?
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number two thousand and twenty-two eighty-two Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus two thousand and thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
The motion is approved, and we'll go to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is two thousand and twenty-two seventy-three Z BG Walbuck Development Company Incorporated, care of Gary Watkins, has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately sixteen point two-one acres located at zero Russellville Road from Ag to RM three townhouse multi-family residential with the general development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Kenny?
We had a pre-application meeting for the property highlighted in yellow on September the ninth of this year. The current zoning of the property is Ag, the current land use is Ag, and then the future land use designation is mixed-use residential. And to reiterate, the applicants are proposing to rezone sixteen point twenty-one acres located at zero Russellville Road from Ag to RM three in order to develop a hundred and forty multi-family dwelling units on the property. And so moving over to page two and looking at the site characteristics review, I would just like to point out the prime farmland designation. The property does contain soil types that are designated as prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. And then looking over... And then looking over to page three and looking at the site design and compatibility review, the application generally complies with all of the items evaluated related to site design, and the compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. Looking down to the traffic impact study, and then looking over to page four, KYTC did not require a traffic impact study, but requested that the developer commit to the removal of the raised concrete median to accommodate left turns in and out of the development entrance. A left turn lane on Russellville Road is not necessary for the proposed unit count, but one would be approved if requested. The applicants agreed to these requirements in DPC 1 and are not proposing a left turn lane on Russellville Road. The proposed development is also located within the boundary of the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan, and staff evaluated eight points, and I would just like to point out four for your consideration. WV-1C, any project should be designed and developed in a manner that will not impair the reasonable long-term use of nearby properties and fulfillment of the land use policies of this focal point plan and the comprehensive plan, and so the planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. Looking over to page five, at WV-2A, residential development should be compatible with adjacent land uses. New development should not exceed the overall density of adjacent development by more than 50%. You all have an attached density map in your packets. Densities in the area range from 1.54 dwelling units per acre to 20.57 dwelling units per acre. The approved density for the adjacent spring water development is 2.85 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is 8.64 dwelling units per acre. The planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. Looking down at WV-2E, a minimum of 20% of the tract to be developed should be set aside and maintained as open space. All open spaces should interconnect by a minimum of a three-foot wide walking trail. Actual construction of paved walking trails dedicated to public use may substitute for some portion of the minimum open space requirement, like dedication and acceptance by a public entity or a portion of land for a public purpose, may substitute acre for acre the minimum open space requirement. DPC 6 requires that the property be developed with at least 25% open space, and then DPC 6 further requires that the property will be developed with a system of internal sidewalks. Sidewalks that surround the parking areas will be six feet in width, and sidewalks providing access to residential buildings will be four feet in width. The planning commission should determine if this adequately addresses WV-2E. And then the final point to consider from the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan is WV-3A. To ensure the quality of commercial development in the focal point, minimum acceptable design standards should be established. All building exterior facades and materials should be reviewed by a committee of professionals, such as architects, planners, and others. DPC 3 requires that all exterior facades of principal residential structures on the property will consist of brick, stone, composite siding such as Everlast, Ephes cementitious siding, LP smart siding, or other modern cementitious materials. Vinyl shall be limited to areas such as soffits, eaves, and trim. Plain face block and split face block shall not be permitted. The planning commission should determine if the proposal complies with WV-3A. So then looking over to page six and looking at the development plan conditions. One, the property shall be limited to one access point to US 68, and that also deals with the removal of the raised concrete median, as well as that all structures will be developed with consistent design and color scheme. Number two, there is the maximum of 140 multifamily dwelling units. Number three, all exterior facades of principal residential structures on the property will consist of brick, stone, composite siding such as Everlast, Ephes cementitious siding, LP smart siding, or other modern cementitious materials. Again, the vinyl will be limited to soffits, eaves, and trim, and then plain face block and split face block will be not, will be permitted, will not be permitted. Number four, no structure shall exceed two stories in height. Number five, deals with lighting for the property. Number six is that 25% open space requirement, as well as the sidewalks. Number seven looks at orientation to Russellville Road, and that no parking area shall be allowed in front of such dwellings, and that no vehicular parking shall be allowed between residential structures and perimeter property lines. Number eight deals with locating the utility service lines underground. Number nine, all residential units on the property will be managed by a single management entity. Number 10 looks at incorporating the existing pond into the stormwater design, as well as that the historic spring on the property will be preserved. And then number 11 looks at sinkhole mitigation, as well as tree preservation. And so looking down to the Focus 2030 category review, I would just like to point out eight items for your consideration, and that will move us to page seven. LU 1.1.3, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. Looking down to LU 2, the proposal may comply with that standard if the planning commission deems the proposal to be a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Looking to LU 2.1.1, the applicants have committed in DPC 6 that the property will be developed with at least 25% open space, as well as that system of internal sidewalks, varying in size from six feet in width to four feet in width. The property will also be developed with common areas for use, such as a playground, picnic areas, or pet play areas, and the planning commission should determine if this is usable and of scenic or ecological value. Looking to LU 2.8 and LU 2.8.1, the proposal does comply with four of the policies from the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan, and so the compliance of four of these policies should be determined by the planning commission, as well as their compliance with those two references. Looking to HN1 and HN1.2, the planning commission should determine if the proposal complies and if the proposed development is compatible and improves and maintains the existing character of the area. And then finally, the planning commission should determine if the proposal complies with HN2.1 and HN4, if the proposed development is located in a suitable location, and if the proposal will contribute to a variety of housing options in the area. And so looking back to page one with some final points to consider, the application complies with the majority of the review criteria assessed by staff during the review process, and again, the property does contain soil types that are designated as prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. That is all that staff have, but we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jenny. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Willey? All right, thank you very much. Is the applicant here, or their representative?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The applicant is the homeowner, the property owners here, and the Kevin Brooks. I swear to tell the truth, live at 1010 College Street.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'm the attorney for the applicant and the property owner, both of whom are here. Be happy to answer any questions you've got. I think this is one, it may look a little familiar, because you approved one right next door, I think at your last meeting, which was similar to this. Actually, maybe bigger and more dense than this one, but similar and right next door. We've, I think, worked through all the issues that we've had with the staff, not issues, but all of their suggestions, and I think we've pretty well accomplished that. So we don't have anything to add, but we'd be happy to help you with any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Brooks or the applicants tonight?
So Kevin, the density map shows, as you just pointed out, I guess we just approved one, it is right next door, right?
Yes.
And then there's another one that's in purple, it says proposed development. That one's already done? Is that correct?
Think...
It shows 16.76 dwelling units per acre.
I may need the staff to help me with that one.
That area's been rezoned, and so under the binding elements, that's how the density was calculated. If it were to develop with the number of units allowed in the binding elements, that would be the approved density.
So not built out yet, but approved?
Right.
Correct. All right, very good. All right, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this proposal? Call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 202273ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan and demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and will go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Our next two items tonight are 202223 Flume, Talbot Place Incorporated, and Lewis and Patricia Cook have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a portion of land containing approximately 3.86 acres located at Zero Small House Road from low-density residential to moderate-density residential. If this motion were approved, our next item would be 202280Z County, Talbot Place Incorporated, and Lewis and Patricia Cook have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately 48.72 acres located at Zero and 4100 Small House Road from Ag to RE Residential State to RS1D Single Family Residential and RM3 Multifamily Residential with the general development plan. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in April for the properties you just outlined, located on Small House Road. The current zoning is Ag and RE, and the current use is agriculture and public, and the future land use map is split between low-density and moderate-density, with a proposed future land use map amendment for roughly 3.8 acres to moderate-density residential. That's, that area is shown on the plat that you should have in your packets, roughly in this general area here. This was the preliminary development plan that was submitted by the applicants, and so we're going to touch on page two under the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks. And so there are some color-coded areas on the site plan that was by design, and so there are some development plan conditions that we'll look at in just a second that relate to these different colors. And the first, we're going to look at the blue shaded lots on the plan, and the application as proposed would require that all single-family lots adjacent to the boundary line shaded in blue on the concept plan would conform to no less than the minimum development standards for the RS1A zone. Looking at the purple lots, those lots would comply with no less than the minimum development standards for RS1C. And then the remaining single-family lots that are shown in the orange color would adhere to the development standards for RS1D. There is a multifamily component that is proposed, the orange buildings and the green-shaded area there, and that area of the development, if this were to move forward, would comply with the RM3 development standards in the ordinance, which also require a 25-foot setback adjacent to any single-family residential district, structure, or use. Touching on the transportation infrastructure, the properties currently have frontage on Small House Road, and also frontage to the north here on Amherst Avenue. The applicants have coordinated access to the site and transportation-related improvements for the proposed development with the Warren County Public Works Department, and we will touch on those requirements here in just a minute. On page three, we've noted that 70% of the development area is classified as prime farmland, and 26% is classified as farmland of statewide importance. Jumping down to the site design and compatibility review, looking at density, the map included it in your packets, outlines densities for existing approved and pending residential developments in the area that range from 0.26 dwelling units per acre to 8.63 dwelling units per acre. The overall proposed, the overall proposed density for the entire development is 8.5 dwelling units per acre, but the density for the RM3 portion of the development, when calculated independently, is 14.13 dwelling units per acre, and the planning commission should determine if the proposed density is compatible with the surrounding area. Looking at the surrounding land uses, I will go back to the land use map, and you'll see that the surrounding area is mainly comprised of agricultural and single-family residential uses. There are also a handful of public institutional, multifamily residential, and commercial uses, as well as vacant tracts in the vicinity. The nearest multifamily uses are located roughly 3/4 of a mile northeast of the proposed development, as the crow flies, and that's that red area up here in the top right corner. The planning commission recently recommended approval of a multifamily development at the intersection of Small House Road and Three Springs Road, which is also located roughly 3/4 of a mile from the proposed development. Looking at the surrounding architectural features, we have included the home sizes, material requirements and such for the surrounding neighborhoods. Each neighborhood is identified with the bold black text in your staff report, so those are there for your reference, and I'll be happy to go over any of those as needed. And then the proposed development standards are outlined on page four. We'll touch on those. So the bottom of page four, looking at the RS1D Single Family Lots, again, there are different color, different colored areas on the concept plan, and so all residential lots shown in blue would have a minimum home size of 2,200 square feet, and all residences on these lots would have a two-car garage. The purple shaded lots would have a minimum home size of 2,000 square feet of heated living space, and would also have at least a two-car garage. And then the orange shaded lots would have a minimum home size of 1,800 square feet, and also have a two-car garage. And then for all single-family lots, so that would be the blue, purple, and orange lots, all exterior facades of all structures will consist of brick, stone, Ephes, cementitious siding, LP smart siding, or other modern cementitious materials. Vinyl will be limited to soffits, eaves, and trim, and plain face block and split face block are prohibited. Touching on the RM3 standards, the applicants have proposed that no structure shall exceed two stories in height. Second, the developer will designate a uniform color scheme for all residential structures so that they are uniform in appearance. No more than two colors of brick, roof, windows, and trim. In addition, residential structures shall have uniform plans with consistent and/or complementary roof lines and architectural details such as columns, gable brackets, railings, etc. And then last, all exterior facades will consist of brick, stone, Ephes, cementitious siding, LP smart siding, or other modern cementitious materials. Vinyl shall be limited to soffits, eaves, and trim, and plain face and split face block are prohibited. Touching on connectivity, the development will tie into the existing Stub Street connection at Amherst Avenue. That's this connection here, and that is required by the subdivision regulations. A Stub Street is also proposed to connect with the undeveloped property to the east, which is also shown here on the plan, in this general area here. Looking at the development plan conditions, at the bottom of page five, the first set of conditions we will review will be for the single-family lots. Number one requires service utility lines to be located underground. Number two limits the single-family portion of the development to a maximum of 81 lots. Three, four, and five establish those minimum home sizes and development standards for the single-family lots based on their location and their color designation, and I went through those just a minute ago. Jumping onto page six, number six outlines the building materials that I read through just a second ago. Seven requires that street lighting be uniform. Eight requires sidewalks on both sides of the street. Looking at number nine, those deal with access and transportation-related improvements, which I will touch on in just a minute. Ten requires screening of side or rear-facing facades along the newly proposed roadway. Eleven looks at tree preservation. Twelve requires a homeowners association, and thirteen addresses sinkholes. Then we'll look at the development plan conditions that are proposed for the RM3 portion of the development. Number one limits this area to a maximum of 333 dwelling units. No more than two individuals and/or entities will have ownership and maintenance responsibilities. The developer will designate a uniform color scheme for all residential structures on the property, and the development will include uniform plans that are consistent and/or complementary as far as roof lines and architectural details are concerned. And then below that, there's a requirement for building orientation or screening of side or rear-facing facades along a public street. On page seven, number three limits the building height to two stories. Below that, there are those building materials that we looked at just a second ago. There's a requirement for a minimum of 30%, oh, excuse me, 30% open space. Below that, you'll see that the... Below that, you'll see that the multi-family portion of the development is proposed to include internal sidewalks, a clubhouse, swimming pool, and outdoor recreational areas. Again, reference to those transportation-related improvements, which we'll touch on after the development plan conditions. Next, there's a requirement for uniform lighting for parking areas, and also a requirement for utilities to be located underground. Looking at tree preservation in number ten, and then next, they have also addressed sinkholes. At the bottom of page seven, we have reference to section three-one-four of the zoning ordinance, and this section outlines the requirements for a traffic impact study. The Warren County Public Works Department reviewed this development before it was submitted for your review, and they outlined three required improvements. They did not require a traffic impact study, but they did require the three items listed on page eight. The first is that they strongly encourage roundabout versus a traditional four-way stop unless it's not feasible due to utilities or existing property boundaries. Second, they are requiring that there be a repair and resurfacing of Small House Road between the existing roundabout and single-access point to Small House near multi-family units. Timing will be based on build-out in order to fix this section of Small House Road after construction. And then third, there would be no construction traffic on existing single-family streets, and that temporary barricades will be required. The applicants did agree to these requirements in their development plan conditions. Below that, we have reference to the Focus 2030 category review. The staff evaluated seventeen items. Of those seventeen items, we found seven of those items to be in compliance. There are ten items for your consideration. The first would be LU one-point-one-point-one and LU one-point-one-point-two, which deal with the future land use map and compatibility. Below that, LU one-point-one-point-three, which also looks at compatibility. Next, LU two and LU two-point-one, which deal with quality of development and character of the area. Below that, reference to LU two-point-one-point-one, which looks at open space. And then on page eight, HN-one and HN-one-point-three, which relate to the existing character and pattern of development in the area and the impact on nearby neighborhoods. And below that, HN-two-point-one and HN-four, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location and if it will enhance the array of housing options available in the area. We are going to wrap up on page one with our points to consider. First, the proposal includes rezoning roughly twenty-three-and-a-half acres to RM-3 for multi-family use. The nearest approved or existing multi-family zone properties are approximately three-quarters of a mile from the proposed development. Below that, densities for existing approved and pending residential developments in the area range from point-two-six to eight-point-six-three dwelling units per acre. The overall proposed density is eight-point-five dwelling units per acre, but the density for the multi-family area when calculated independently is fourteen-point-one-three dwelling units per acre. And then last, about seventy percent of the development area is classified as prime farmland, and twenty-six percent is classified as farm, farmland of statewide importance. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Would you take your pointer and show us on the concept map where the roundabout is? It should be in that top corner.
There, there's a, a new roundabout that's proposed here, but if I go back to...
No, the new, the new one.
Oh, the one that's proposed. Yeah, that's proposed right here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So Rachel, a couple of questions if I may. Let's go to the multi-family portion. This looks extremely well laid out, but I don't, maybe I'm missing it. I don't see anything that stipulates singular management.
There was a requirement, they've limited to two, I believe, and that's in development plan condition. One, for the RM-3 portion, they're proposing that the multi-family area be developed with no more than two individuals or entities having ownership and maintenance responsibilities.
No more than two?
No more than two, yes.
And then, of course, you just touched on the roundabout. That is new, so, so orient me if I am coming from the existing roundabout, this roundabout would be somewhere close to where the existing curve is located?
Yeah, so if you look at the, the map here, the existing roundabout is right here where the cursor is, and then the proposed roundabout would be in that curve, as you've stated, right, right around this area here.
This may or may not be in our purview, but I want to ask. The existing roundabout, while well-thought-out, was, in my view, poorly designed initially, and, and so the county has since upgraded or updated it, and the, the biggest issue was it is a single, it's a single-lane roundabout, and a large truck just can't go through there without getting wheels up off of the curb. So have, do we have any stipulation on how this particular roundabout is to be constructed? I don't want to repeat the same set of mistakes.
Sure. At this point in time, there's no detail as to the, to the, to the design of the roundabout. I think the applicants may speak to that more here in just a minute, but it, it's my best guess that they were maybe waiting to see what the outcome of this hearing would be before they got into the details of the design and specifics of that roundabout.
And if I may address that as well, so the roundabout design originally, that is actually the exact same size as the roundabout of Shav, that the city has done on Shav Lane and Kenbell Boulevard. The difference is, is when the county first installed that, they did not do the mountable curb.
Interior portion, if you will.
Yeah, the interior portion, and that has now since been fixed, but as far as the dimensions, the design, it is, it is the exact same design and size as the Shav Lane.
And so is it your understanding that they would also be doing the interior portion along with, so, so it wasn't necessarily the, the circumference of the roundabout? It was certainly drivable, but a truck simply can't?
Right.
Can't go through there?
So that new interior concrete portion they put to allow the trailers that are coming behind to go over that instead of through the grass?
Very good.
I think they, they've learned that lesson.
All right.
So I would, I would not expect this one to be any less than, than what's there.
Thank you.
So Ben, the corrections that they have made, does that seem to suffice as far as truck mobility, mobility?
All I can say is that it's the same as the one on Shav Lane. It seems to function much better now, and I'm sure there'll be varying, there's varying opinions about roundabouts in general, but, but I would say yes.
Okay. Mr. Stark, I will add that, I, I went through there just a couple of days ago, and it does seem as if it has addressed that issue. I'm certainly no traffic expert, but that particular issue, I think, has been addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any other questions for Rachel? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Is the applicant here or their representative?
Yes, Mr. Chairman Kevin Brooks. I represent the applicant. I guess I'm sworn, you want to double swear me? Am I good? I won't take my fifteen minutes, I don't think. I just want to make sort of a few introductory comments. You've got a really, really thorough staff report there, and a lot of time has been put in on this, so you've got most of the facts in front of you that you need. I may want to ask Ms. Hurt a question or two here in a minute, just so she doesn't get off too easily, but let me just say to, to begin with that you all know that the threshold standard, the, the big overarching standard that you have to meet in these cases is to be sure that we are compliant with the comprehensive plan, and I think what you've seen here already in the staff report answers that question. I think that we are compliant with the comprehensive plan, but I make that point because I submit that this development, this development is way better than compliant with the comprehensive plan. I submit that this, this development is really a model development, a model layout for urban and urban area and infill urban area where we're doing multiple housing styles, and it really is a, a perfect fit for this specific location. So, so I'm proud to bring it to you in, in that respect, and maybe we'll get into some more of this later, but I'll just say that the, the layout that you see there is expensive. If, if the applicant wanted to come in, as many do, and propose something that's the cheapest possible development cost, it would not be this. And if they wanted to just maximize lot sales or unit sales in that property, it would not be this. This is really good planning. This could, could have been denser, you know, but it's not. The, the compatibility issue that you look at so many times, you always look, look at in these hearings, when, when you look at the standards that we have in our DPCs in the purple area and the blue area, which abuts up to these existing subdivisions, really all the subdivisions that is in the staff report, you will see that our standards are superior to all of them. Our house sizes are bigger, we are one-hundred percent brick and stone and, and similar substances. You don't see that all that often. That's to be, try to be compatible. That's to be, some people in this room won't believe this, but that's to try to be good neighbors. And so, so we're really proud that we've done it, that the, the, I guess I would just say in sum, we could have tried to throw a lot more units in there. We didn't do it. We'll, we'll give you some information later about density, but as these kinds of developments glow, go, we are really below average in density. We're below both the mean and the median in what we've looked at, and Ms. Hurt has helped me with a whole bunch of data that we could look at that, and, and we'll share that with you. So I just want to say upfront that a whole lot of effort has been put into, to make this a really, a really good development, really good planning for this community. So that said, I want to ask Rachel a question or two, if I could. Rachel, I think I used the word a minute ago infill, and maybe it's in the staff report, but if not, I'll use that word now, infill. And I think the, first of all, the comprehensive plan encourages infill development, doesn't it?
Does.
Yeah, and this would be what you would call an infill development?
Yes.
And so tell us what that means. What is infill development? Why does the comprehensive plan encourage it, and why is it good planning?
I'll take those one at a time.
Yeah.
So infill development is considered when you have an area that's vacant or a large area, you might call it a hole, where surrounding that area, there are already existing established neighborhoods or uses that are already in existence. So by definition, this would be what we would consider an infill development.
And why does, why is it good planning?
So the comprehensive plan encourages infill development in areas where we already have existing infrastructure, such as sewer and good water, transportation networks, things of that nature, to basically maximize the land that we have available for development in order to reduce premature development in the countryside or the more rural areas of the county.
So you told us that there was a pre-application conference, I think sometime in April, is that right? And there was at least one meeting prior to that, which is often the case, is that right? And in that meeting, the developer and their engineers just chatted with the staff about what might be the best way to develop this property. Is that a fair statement?
Mostly. I, I don't know if we would have said this is the best way to do, to do that, but we did have conversations about...
Back and forth? You gave suggestions?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is the way it always works, right?
Sure. We, we make our suggestions based on the comprehensive plan and what we feel would, would be compliant with that.
And just good planning?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And so then the next meeting, really the official meeting, the, the pre-application conference that's required occurred, and at that meeting, I'm gonna, maybe not do an exact quote, but I'm gonna do a pretty close paraphrase to what Mr. Peterson said when he saw our plan, and that was, somebody finally listened to us. You remember that?
I do.
Yeah? You remember that, Rachel?
Yep.
So what does that mean? What did he mean? You can answer that, Ben. What did you all mean?
It would mean that from where we started to where we got at that point, we at least had some, I guess, changes in the proposed development.
So there's a road that, well, the roundabout, there's a road, kind of, I'll call it the central spine, and on the, what would that be, the east side that connects to the row property, and if it went on through the row property, it would connect to?
Three Springs.
Three Springs. And so that piece, is that good planning for the future, just community planning?
Yes.
So there's also a stub-street to the north, and forgive me, a...
Hurst.
Yes, okay. So you've already said this, but I just want to be sure, that stub-street was not something that the applicant required or that the staff required? The regulation requires that, is that right?
That's right.
There's lots of nice people back here who want to say some things, so I'm going to give them an opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Brooks, before you sit down, Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Brooks?
Kevin, I do have one more that, that we haven't talked about. Clearly, there's that FAA...
Uh huh. VOR?
Pardon me if, yeah, if I butchered that. So any, any special permission required to develop here? So did you guys cross all of those thresholds?
Well, I can explain that. That's really why we're here. You would drive around that corner that we've just been talking about, and many people might say, you know, that seems ripe for development, why hadn't that developed? And the reason it hasn't is because of what you've just said. That is a lease to the federal government, and that lease just expired. So, so there's, there's the answer to that. It's, I don't, I don't want to give the technical answer, but it's expired, and we assume that, that they won't want to renew it. If they did, it would be pretty short because it's just outdated technology. They don't really need it, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Kevin, one, one other question.
Oh, okay, sorry.
In regard to density, I think, I think they indicated eight-point-five in one area, fourteen-point-three units per acre in the other one. How does that, those density numbers compare with the other areas that are surrounding that property, like Laurel, Stone, Lane, and Amherst Avenue?
I think the, so the eight-point-five is the overall density.
Right.
The fourteen is the multi-family density, and then the single-family density, I don't have it in front of me. Rachel, do you? It is...
Three-point-two-two.
Three-point-two-two, and I don't have the, but it's in, in our report, I think, the density of those other residential areas, I believe.
Yes, Commissioner Stark's on page eighteen. You asked about Laurel, Stone.
Right.
Ashmore Park, the density for that neighborhood is three-point-seven-nine.
All right. Thank you.
Regarding the density, Rachel, just for clarification, some of the adjoining properties were on septic and some...
Yes, that's correct. If you look at your zoning map on page thirteen, the yellow RE lots, those would be on septic. The green lots to the north and east, those are on sewer. That would be Twin Elms and Ashmore Park. Part of Twin Elms, not all of Twin Elms is on sewer.
Did you repeat that? You said the yellow is on septic?
Yes, the RE lots.
How did they get such high density on septic?
So the, the current requirement is one-acre lots on septic, but way back in the day, there, there were smaller minimums for septic, so it is kind of quirky.
Like RS-1A already? Okay, all right, thank you.
So I might just go ahead and share with you some, since we're talking about density...
Kevin, about, you got about two more minutes.
Okay. I'll wait. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Not to cut you short, Commissioners, we've heard from the applicants, is there anyone in the audience tonight? Let me ask this, does this group who is adjoining neighbors, do you all have a, one representative? Wait a minute, we, there's one or two, or?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Warren, Robert Shidolin, I represent some neighbors in the Twin Elms and Ridgewood subdivision. And I think Ms. Broderick.
Taylor Broderick on behalf of Jenny Rowe.
Okay, so let's, let's, each of you, let's give each of you 10 minutes. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Shidolin, if you'll come up here.
Robert Shidolin, 519 East 10th Avenue, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Robert.
So as I mentioned, I represent a, a group of Twin Elms and Ridgewood residents. And, and they have fundamental issues with the amount of density that this project is bringing to their neighborhoods. First of all, if you're here from those neighborhoods and you are opposed to this development because of those reasons, if you would just simply raise your hand. They are concerned about density because density is a real issue here. The, the project has an 8.5 overall density, but it is being split between low-density flume development and a, an application to a moderate level flume. So either the properties, the split has a 14 density or it has an eight density. So either you're putting an eight density in the moderate or the low-density flume area, which does not go to eight, or you're putting 14 in a moderate density, which has an upper limit of 13. So I've got a couple of questions, and I'd like to ask Ms. Hurd if she could, actually, if you can come and give me back to the density map. So on this map, a couple of questions. Of the neighborhoods that are identified here, all but two of them have a density that is less than four units per acre, is that correct?
Said all but two.
All but two. I think there is the.
Yeah, that, that looks correct.
Yeah, and of those two, what is the size of those developments?
It looks like there was a zone change in 2022 at the roundabout. There's an acreage of 5.73 and a density of 5.58. And then the other one is a pending zone change at Three Springs Road at the end of Small House at the intersection. 5.5 acres with a density of 8.63.
And how many units in each of those?
The last one I just mentioned on Three Springs is 48. And then the one at the roundabout is 32.
And then and as you mentioned, that the, what was it? What is the density of the multifamily portion of this development?
If you pull it out alone, it's right around 14.13.
Now, you had talked with Mr. Brooks about the infill. Is it one of the requirements of infill development that it be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood?
Yes, there are objectives and action items. I don't remember off the top of my head what the references are, but there are items in the comprehensive plan that say that infill development should be compatible with the surrounding areas or that they would complement those areas.
One of the elements of compatibility would be density, correct?
Yes.
In shifting gears, I'd like to ask a quick question of Ben Peterson. Ben, on the commission's website, there is a Metropolitan Planning Organization Request for Proposals Regarding the Small House Road Corridor Improvement Study. What is that study?
Sure, the best thing may be just for me to read our paragraph for our RFP. And we did have the kickoff meeting for that study this week. So it's to improve traffic operations and safety while considering the needs of multimodal users and the community's growing population. The requested study should determine necessary corridor improvements on the identified portion of the roadway that will have minimal right-of-way impacts, yet provide necessary improvements for all users into the future. The improvements will consider recommendations at the major intersections and will seek to include bicycle and pedestrian facilities along Small House Road.
What is the reason for there being such a study proposed?
So the, the reason for this study is perhaps a little more future forward-looking than several we do where we're trying to, to fix a problem. So along Small House Road, as we've developed, we've got more congestion, with more people, more congestion. So this particular study is how do we make spot improvements along that corridor to increase mobility and to accommodate that congestion we know we already have, but also future congestion?
I would also like to call Brad Lawrence as a witness.
Lawrence, your name and address, please, sir?
Brad Lawrence, 3627 Amherst.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Lawrence, how long have you lived in the Ridgewood area?
18 years.
Okay. What drew you to that neighborhood?
It was a bicycle ride that my family did 18 years ago. We lived in Blue Ridge or Bluegrass subdivision off Grotter Pond. We were riding bikes, we discovered that neighborhood, and we fell in love with it. It was the perfect size, not too big, not too small. Properties were well-maintained, and it just looked like the place that we wanted to raise our, raise our family.
Okay. What is about the character of this? How would you describe the character of the particular subdivision?
Lots of families, just, I mean, no traffic. I mean, my kids, there's lots of kids in the neighborhood that can go out and, you know, do what kids do, ride bikes, play, you know, play catch, do things, and not have to worry about traffic or anything else.
And do you have a concern about connecting this densely populated multifamily apartment complex effectively to your neighborhood?
Absolutely. I mean, with 333 apartments, you know, 650 vehicles, whatever it is. I mean, the shortest distance for those people, if they were going to, say, get out to Scottsville Road, is going to be directly through our neighborhood. And I think it just presents a tremendous safety issue for, for the families and the children that are in that neighborhood.
And is there any? Do you have any real issue with the single-family part of this development?
No, you know, most people live in our area, you know. A lot of it are on the assumption that nothing would ever be developed because of that airline, that, that tower that was out there. But I guess in the back of our minds, I mean, we knew it could be developed, I guess, at some point, someday. Certainly never thought it'd be an apartment complex. But as, you know, as far as single-family homes, you know, I, I don't think anyone has an issue with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. And that's the only witness I'll have. Reserve some time for summation later.
Thank you, Robert.
Could I ask Mr. Lawrence one quick question?
Let's, let's let, let's, let's let everybody have their say, Kevin, and then. All right, so we have someone else representing the other, other homeowners?
Good evening, Taylor Broderick, I'm here on behalf of Jenny Rowe.
Would you state your address, please?
I certainly will. 921 College Street.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you all. This has been, this is my first appearance in front of the commission, so it's a pleasure to be here. I will be very brief because there are a lot of folks who want their three minutes. It would appear to me that as proud as Mr. Brooks is represented that he is about this development, that no, little to no effort was made to speak to the nearby residents as to their feelings. In short, this is not compliant with the comprehensive plan. I cannot say density to you all enough, 14.3. It is significantly and vastly different from everything around it. The nearest approved change is 8.3 units an acre. This property, that's comparing apples to oranges in my mind, that's five acres. These are brownstones, it's a gated community. And part of, the reason that that was approved is because that, they donated land to create part of the roundabout, as I understand it. That is also a main artery, it's Three Springs Road. That property is sort of encapsulated, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it. And they are going to come in and out on Three Springs Road. This is just simply not the same. It is overly dense for the area. And I guess I would be remiss if I did not, on behalf of my client, the tree line that is referenced belongs to her. And the Rowe farm is very important to her. Trees may not be important to a lot of folks, but I know they're important to Jenny Rowe, as is everything on her farm. Finally, and I'm certainly just a know-it-all lawyer, I am not a traffic expert, but what is curious to me, it was, and it's on page seven, number seven, and then again on page eight. The suggestion is that about, and I don't really do math, I went to Bowling Green High, so y'all forgive me, but 1,500 feet we're talking about resurfacing, and I, I'm not sure why that's significant or how that is different from anywhere else on Small House Road. So those are just points I would like for the commission to consider. And I will turn the floor over to these other folks who want desperately their three minutes. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. So we've heard by the two representatives here tonight about density. The apartments are at 14, the multifamily's at eight. The connectivity going into the, on Amherst. The tree line along Mrs. Rowe's property. So if anyone else has a comment for three minutes that's different than these, we would be glad to hear from you. Yes, sir?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, remind the audience regarding connectivity. This body does not have the ability to remove connectivity. So the applicant has not requested connectivity. And we, as a body, cannot remove that connectivity. Your only option, if I understand correctly, and I'm going to ask the staff to jump in here, is to request a road closing. Now, I'm sure I butchered that, so, so Ben will clean that up for me.
So in this particular case, I don't know that that's even an option, so we probably don't need to be offering that either. But, but that is certainly a conversation they could have with, be the county here, right? Yeah.
Connectivity is required for safety vehicles. So if there's a, if there's an ambulance that needs to get into a particular area, they require that the, that the subdivisions connect to one another so that they don't have delays. And so once again, I want to reiterate, this body cannot remove connectivity. Thank you, sir.
Your name and address, please, sir?
My name is David Cook. My address is 3416 Polaris Court, Bowling Green, 42103.
Yes, sir, Ms. Cook, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, lots of great points have been brought up here, but, you know, one of the bigger ones is the safety of our children. There are no current sidewalks in the neighborhoods that the connectivity will go through. I understand there's not a lot you all can do about that, but that, the number of, of proposed units that we'll do will increase a lot of flow through the neighborhoods because Small House is already well overwhelmed. All you have to do is look at it at 5 o'clock in the afternoon, any afternoon. The other side of that is, is nobody's addressed public safety. You know, we're talking about building multi-residential apartments there, adding more houses there. What are we doing to address public safety? How is our EMS? How is our fire departments? How are they going to service that much more in this area, which is already overwhelmed? And all those departments are already understaffed. We really need to be cautious with what we do in regards to planning and zoning throughout the county, not just this point, but to make sure that people are safe, being able to be handled safely. We currently just don't have the infrastructure set in place for that. And I understand we have to grow as a community, and we want to grow, and we've done a great job of that over the years. But we also have to grow those things that make our community as good as it is, which is those safety devices.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. So we appreciate your comments regarding public safety and then the safety of the neighbors. Thank you. Is there anyone else that has, would like to make a comment that's different than what has been addressed, please? Yes, sir? You have three minutes.
Hey, Michael Givens, 4320 Small House Road, on the farm that's on the side of this subdivision that you're planning. I appreciate the job y'all do and the responsibility you have. I would do it for any amount of pay because I'm just asking you today for two things. It's fairness and justice. I'm a 70-year-old man who has, he talks about the plan here. I've planned all my life and worked in Bowling Green and did these things for 50 years of supporting the community, paying my taxes, and the, all the other organizations, charitable organizations, to be, make it a good community, okay? Just like across the street at Legacy Point, I was thrown under the bus and booked 24 houses up next to me on the other side of where 24 neighbors. I asked for a chain-link fence, they laughed at me. And I spent $30,000 in almost six months of my life cutting a road through there to put a fence up there so that it'd be safe for the neighbors, safe for me. If I was a little boy or girl, I'd want to go over and play in his barn, in his garden, ride my bikes, my four-wheelers, all that stuff over there. And if they have an accident, whose fault is it? Does it come back to you all? No, it's my fault. So first of all, I'm trying to get to the point on this, some other things. This is what I deal with. If you put all the time, energy, and thoughts that went into creating flume, why would you change it? Didn't they know what they were doing? Why would you change the density now, after I've spent all this time in here and doing these things? If, if your decision, all the things I've been in matters, nothing matters but flume. I keep hearing that word, I didn't even know what it was. Flume, flume, flume. So I asked you not to vote for this amendment to change flume that you have did all this work on. And I asked for, if you do agree to do it, be fair. Build the structures that will keep them safe and me safe. I don't want them picking their fruits and bestows out of my garden. I just don't want that. And I've had to deal with it. It's cost me a lot of money on the other side. I've already spent over $4,000 this year because my 200-year-old trees are over there, but they shade people's swimming pools that they bought the house for, then built the swimming pool. But my tree, which is 200 years old, is shading their pool, and they can't get into it till afternoon. That's just one of the situations I've dealt with. I've dealt with many others. And the trash, the pets, the noise, walking to the garden, you have 12 dogs at each back door that's going to come out and bite you, try to bite you, if I didn't have my 12, my chain-link fence up. So I'm on the other side of these people. I'm just talking about an old man who wants life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. Spent my life here in this community, and to do this would change the quality of life. And I asked Mr. Hunt himself, I said, "Mr. Hunt, just give me 10 more years." And he said, he said, "I'm 80 years old." I said, "Oh, I miss for 10 more years." I know this city's going to have all of it before it's over with, but I've got a huge investment in both those farms that I put in there for the strict reason of having country time with trees, with open space, with things that I could enjoy and not have to leave Warren County for my retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Givens, appreciate that. So we've, we've heard about fairness and justice for Mr. Givens, public safety, safety, the comprehensive plan, tree line, connectivity, and density. Is there anyone else that has a comment that is, that is different than what we have heard? Is there anyone else that has a comment that is, that is different than what we have heard? Okay, yes, ma'am. And your name and address, please?
I, I am Melanie Coffey. My address is forty-one ninety-five Small House Road.
Yes, ma'am. You swear to tell the truth?
I absolutely do.
Thank you.
Hi, I thank you for considering my family's view of this rezoning. Bowling Green has been my home for over twenty-five years. It's been a great place for my husband and I to raise our family. It's home. We bought our home and six acres five years ago on Small House Road, across the street from the property that is being rezoned with that higher density. We have had great neighbors and the people care about each other. It's a great place to live. But since we moved in, the Legacy Point neighborhood was developed practically in our backyard, and we have been okay with that. We understand development of the land. We're not wanting to complain. But in addition to the Legacy Point neighborhood, several other developments have been in progress. Stagner Farms, Penny Royal, McKenzie Meadows, Windsor Trace, and I believe others as well. Hundreds and hundreds of households and more than twice as many cars, as you know, have been added to our area, increasing traffic substantially. And some of these approved developments are not even complete yet, and we know more people and more cars are coming. And aside from a couple small turn lanes and a rural round, roundabout at the Elrod and Small House Road intersection, no other infrastructure improvements have been made to accommodate the explosive amount of additional traffic. We cannot approve adding developments that cram in as many people as possible without taking into account the existing roads and traffic problems on our area. Small House Road is a thirty-five mile an hour, narrow, bendy, country-type road that bottlenecks at Three Springs, where traffic is constantly backed up. It is dangerous and accidents frequently happen. And from Three Springs, it meets Scottsville Road, which is an already packed intersection. Small House also feeds onto Elrod Road, which is a similar country-type road, two-lane, narrow, and bendy. These roads are not set up to handle the addition of a massive development. I know back in two thousand and six, there was an Elrod-Natcher interchange study. Had we have an, had we added an, a ramp onto the Natcher or some other way to, to direct traffic, I could, I could almost see how this would be something that you could do. But that's just not how this area is. It's limited. We're very limited in the capability to feed traffic through our town. Infrastructure needs to be a priority and needs to be first, and then the development. I believe that otherwise we harm the people that have chosen already to make this their home. If this rezoning is approved, it seems that the developers benefit by reaping profits while our, the neighbors suffer the detrimental impact. I've loved living in this area of town, and I'd like to continue to love to live there. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Coffey. So we've heard, I think we've heard, infrastructure, traffic, fairness and justice, public, public safety, safety, connectivity, density. Is there anyone else that has a comment that is different than what we have talked about? It needs to be different. We don't want to shut anybody off, but we've heard, it's been one more. Your name and address, please?
Katie Ellison, three-six-one-five Amherst Avenue.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Ellison.
So we mentioned apartments, and that the closest apartments are three-quarters of a mile as a crow flies. If you drive it, it's actually two miles, and those closest apartments are on Cave Mill, or Cave Mill Road in a multi-zoned area. It's a commercial area across from the Shell Gas Station and over there where the Chandler Apartments are. So you're talking about a very wide two-lane road with turn lane in the center, traffic lights, busy area right behind the mall, right behind Wal-Mart. So nothing like what you're talking about here. Mr. Brooks says that this is a model development, and I use his words, for an urban area. This is not an urban area. If you want to look at what the proposal is, go look at Traditions off of Lover's Lane. That's what they're proposing to build, is something similar to that. Lover's Lane is a four-lane road with a center turn lane, and they have a turn lane for that neighborhood. It was also not built around surrounding neighborhood with a density like ours. I think you need to take into consideration what has been there for a long time and those densities. Again, there are no apartments in the area. We don't have a problem with having homes there and what they have proposed for half of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Okay, is there, thank you, we've talked about the apartments. Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Is there anyone else that has something different that has not been mentioned tonight? Something different?
I think it's different.
Okay.
Joseph Steele, four-zero-two-seven Cadillac Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Steele.
I swear to tell the truth. Just real quickly, the, the, did I hear no traffic impact study? Is that correct? No traffic impact study? I don't know if that makes sense. Okay. I just want to reiterate that, because that seems in automatic. I don't know the translation of the multi-unit density, fourteen. How many people does that equate to, please? Or residents, whatever. Can anybody tell me that? I don't know. How many, are we talking, is that five hundred people? I don't know. I'm asking. Can someone elaborate on that?
You wouldn't know that at this point in time. The density's based on the number of units. So each unit may, we don't know if it's a one-bedroom unit, a two-bedroom unit, a three-bedroom unit.
Is it six hundred people?
That's, that's not known.
Okay. And the last question, the last statement. The V.O.R. tower, sound like you were guessing. Is that relevant or not? Now, I have aircraft flying directly over my house, almost, and they use that ILS glideslope now. So I question, if you don't know that, I think you should find out for sure before any kind of decision is made. So is that a definitive answer from the federal government, government that it is no longer used?
Thank you, Mr. Steele.
I don't know. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else, something different? Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please?
Christian Belt Camp, one-four-three-seven Saturn Way, Bowling Green.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir. So a couple of concerns that I know have been touched on, and I know it has to be new information, but we have been informed as neighbors that we need to address development plan conditions at this time at planning and zoning before you go to vote. There are some significant discrepancies or lacking pieces in the development plan conditions. I don't disagree with Mr. Brooks. This is a really awesome plan, not for this location. And we have more than adequate land in Warren County to meet the needs of our current housing deficit. Your 2030 plan says so. That doesn't mean that this location is the right location for that. So as our commissioners, we would ask that you would seriously take that into consideration in terms of what they've said. Keep in mind that in, proposing this development with a similar footprint to Traditions, they have not had to do a traffic impact study, which is typically required, as you know. It was waived because of our Public Works engineer saying that if they were to install another roundabout, which happens to be a hundred and seventy-six yards from the existing roundabout, which has some issues. That's one, one issue. There are no development plan conditions that would require them to make that roundabout to the standards of an urban roundabout development. And I was told by the Public Works Commissioner, or by the Public Works engineer, that the roundabout that currently exists is a rural roundabout. It is different and built to different specs than the one on Shive Lane. I know that Ben mentioned that by putting around the apron, that that has changed. I'm not, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know that for sure, but something worth considering, I believe. So, but we're talking about a road. Small House Road was a farm-to-market road built over sixty years ago, when Basil Griffin said, "Hey, let's put, let's pave this." And there were no specifications, there were no boundaries of what we would follow now in terms of guidelines. And so when we say that requested improvements to Small House Road in their DPCs for this density, or any density for that matter, they're vague and they're not adequate for a project of this magnitude. So the critical question for managing growth is not, is there space to accommodate this growth, but rather where and how we should be developing it. And so I would just really like you to consider, the road that we're talking about is twenty feet in some sections, sixteen in others, and we are saying that we will mitigate the increased traffic load, which we can't say how many people will live in these households, but we're talking about increasing this simple corridor, which is bookended by a rural roundabout, that in less than a year has needed improvements and has been proposed for additional. And then the other bookend is Three Springs Road, which is a T-intersection, which is rather dangerous. I understand that there's improvements potentially pending for Three Springs Road. But to say that in this one-mile corridor, that we can add at least six hundred more residences, not taking into account the, the fact that we've already added, as Mrs. Coffey suggested, there are all these other neighborhoods that you guys have approved and put forward, and we just keep putting, to use your terminology, infill, but we're not, we do not have the adequate infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate, we appreciate everybody's comments tonight. Very well thought out. We appreciate everybody being here tonight. Mr. Brooks, do you have any closing comments briefly?
I'll be brief. I promise. First thing I want to do is provide you with some density information, and I started to do it earlier, and I probably should have gone ahead and done it, but I, I think I have enough here to pass around to all of you all. And to the lawyers. What I'm giving you is information provided to me by the Planning Commission staff, and I, and there's, you all have been very busy, and you have approved a whole lot of multifamily developments in the last two years. So I, I went back two years, and I selected the larger ones. This is a larger one, admittedly, so I, we selected just sort of arbitrarily a hundred and fifty unit complexes and up. And when we did that, it resulted in what you're looking at right here. And what you're looking at right here shows that this proposal is, is just below average. The average is in there. The average over those years is seventeen point eight dwelling units per acre. Ours is fourteen point one-three of the, of those, and I think there are ten of them. Only three of them are smaller than ours, and a couple of them only barely smaller. The point is, you have been in the business of approving developments like this all along, and I would submit, I'm just going to say this, I, I don't have this much data, but I would be really surprised if any of those ten developments you've approved in the last two years were not significantly more dense than the surrounding area. It's the nature of multifamily development, and that's the business this community is in these days. So, a little bit about my, my earlier comments, in terms of that this is a good plan. You don't see on the multifamily just a whole bunch of aplexes. It's really only half, half of it is. I think that's, that's a nod towards compatibility. You see that we've had a road, and we've come away from these single-family people. That's good planning, where we, we transition from one kind of person, single-family development to another, to a road, to the more dense. And the infrastructure is really all there, as you know, or we wouldn't be here. We've got water, we've got sewer, we've heard all about roads, and you know that what we do on roads is exactly what the county road department tells us to do, and that's what we've done. One more thing about roads, and that's the, if, if you vote against us tonight, don't vote against us based upon the specs for the roundabout. We'll build a, whatever roundabout the county road department wants us to build. I don't think this is really a good forum to sort that out. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. The, the applicants, we're, we, the applicants, representatives, do you all have anything else you would like to add?
Mr. Brooks just talked about the, the density of various units you all have developed, or have approved. And, and I'll commend you. You all have done a fantastic job of making Bowling Green an organized place with developments in appropriate places. The vast majority of these densely populated developments are in areas where there are high-density or other flume locations that allow for such density. They're in the large corridors, they're in the commercial areas, and because of that, we have a number of neighborhoods in our, in our county that we have room for some single-family developments. And we have here an area of the county that is, by its character, predominated by single-family developments. This proposal is not in conformity with that, because it changes the character, and it changes the character of the neighborhoods that are there. That's why these people are upset. It's not because there's something that's going to marginally be an eyesore to them as they drive by. It's because what's happening here is going to fundamentally change the character of their neighborhood. If they wanted to live in the densely populated, the commercial areas, you know, they've had the opportunity to do that, but they chose these quiet neighborhoods where the density is low. And in fact, you know, the average density for the areas that are highlighted on the density scale, it's actually two-point-one-nine units per acre. So, in any capacity, this development simply doesn't meet that. To make a flume amendment, they need to, to establish that there was an overriding public benefit, that there was a mapping error, or that this is clearly compatible with the surrounding development. They haven't established any of those to allocate for this flume change. I mean, we're changing from low density to something that is being proposed as a moderate density, but what they're putting in there is a, is a, a development that is appropriate for a high-density development. And we have places for that. And yes, there are places in this county where this would be a model development. This isn't it. This affects these, these neighbors, and we would ask that you deny it because it doesn't conform to the neighborhood. And it, and it doesn't fit the fluent flume categories. I mean, we're talking about an eight-unit per development, unit per acre development in a low-density flume, which has a four-point-five unit cap to it. Well, that doesn't fit. Or we have a fourteen-unit element in the moderate, which has a thirteen-unit cap. That doesn't fit. It doesn't fit what it's, what they're, what it has been designated for, and it doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood they're trying to put it in.
Not cutting you off, Robert, because your two minutes are up. Thank you. Okay. Yes, ma'am, something, something different?
I have two things that I believe are different, and I neglected in my haste to mention them. Ms. Rowe has wanted me to bring to y'all's attention the stormwater issue that I believe presented itself with surrounding developments when they were approved. In addition, I think some of these other folks neglected to discuss the schools, if we're bringing in potentially hundreds, if not thousands, of additional residents. I would just simply say, in closing, this is not compatible, the density comparisons that Mr. Brooks has presented, this is not, doesn't give you a location. This density is not compatible with the flume, and this does not serve the public interest. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Just FYI, the, the, any developer in any project has to retain their stormwater, they have to contain that on their own property, so.
Mr. Warren, I'm sorry to interrupt. Our rules give to the applicant the final word on closing, and so I, I think you probably ought to offer, Mr. Brooks, the opportunity to make any additional points that are raised by the opposition.
Okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Brooks, any, any different comment?
I don't want to hear it from you again.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Brooks. All right, commissioners, we are, the first item tonight is the All right, commissioners, the first item tonight is the flume map amendment on the 3.86 acres located at Zero Small House Road. A motion... Just give me a second. We would call for a motion to approve the future land use map amendment or a motion to deny the future land use map amendment.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to deny the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 202223 flume, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed flume amendment has not met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU-1.1.4 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, Hamp, explain it. We have a motion to deny and a second.
And you'll be asked to vote yes or no on that motion, so if you'll keep in mind that if you support denial, you'll vote yes. If you are opposed to denial, then you'll vote no. Yes is a denial, no is not.
Chair Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cecil.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
So, the motion has been denied for the future land, the flume, so then we will not be voting then on the zoning map amendment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, this case has been denied, and so planning and zoning is denied. It will not go to fiscal court, and this part of the hearing is completed. As you all are leaving, if you could keep your voices down, so we have many more items to cover. Thank you all for being here tonight. Okay. Our... Okay. Would you all keep your voices down, please?
We've got about six more items to go, please, so if you all could...
If you want to talk, let's go outside. Thank you. Our next item tonight is 202291Z County.
I've got 100 miles to travel.
Gary and Shelley Hall, the applicants, and Brandy and Alan Adamson, the owners... Let me just stop a minute. All right, let's give it another shot. Gary and Shelley Hall, the applicants, and Brandy and Alan Adamson, the owners, have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 5.6 acres located at 1217 Ren Road from Ag to RE Residential State with the general development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on August 23 of this year for the property highlighted in yellow, and the current zoning of the property is Ag. The current land use is Ag, and then the future land use designation is low-density residential. And to reiterate the request, the applicants are proposing to rezone 5.65 acres located at 1217 Ren Road from Ag to residential estate in order to divide the property into two single-family residential tracts. The applicants have supplied the site plan before you. So, looking over to page two, site characteristics review, I would just like to point out the transportation infrastructure. The property does have frontage on Red Road, which is a county-maintained rural local roadway with 50 feet of right-of-way and 14 feet of pavement width. And then looking down to the site design and compatibility review, the application complies with a majority of items evaluated relating to the site design, and the compatibility should be determined by the Planning Commission. Looking to the general development plan, as well as the development plan conditions, also on page three, there should be a maximum of two lots, a number one. Number two, any new resident shall have at least 1,600 square feet of heated and cooled living space, exclusive of garages and porches, manufactured homes are prohibited. Any new residence shall be oriented to face Ren Road or be screened by way of preservation of the existing vegetation along Ren Road for number three. Number four deals with tree preservation. Number five deals with building materials. Number six, in the event of casualty, the existing home at 1217 Ren Road may be rebuilt in its current form, i.e. the same minimum home size, exterior materials, and foundation materials. Number seven deals with sinkhole mitigation and coordination with Public Works. Number eight looks at, any new home constructed on the property shall be set back a minimum of 100 feet from the front property line. Number nine, the existing residents will continue to use the existing septic system located on the property, and the Barren River Health Department will be coordinated or shall perform a site evaluation. And then number 10 deals with access to the property in coordination with Warren County Public Works. Looking down to the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 14, and I would just like to point out four for your consideration, and those will continue on page four. LU 1.1.3, the Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. The proposal may also comply with LU 2. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. And then looking down to HN 2.1 and HN 4, the Planning Commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type and if the proposed residence is believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. And so, looking back to page one, just for some final points to consider, the application does comply with a majority of the criteria evaluated by staff, with considerations noted, again, for the current road width for Ren Road as 14 feet. That is all that staff have, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Janie. Commissioners, any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Is the applicant here or the representative, anything that you all would like to say?
I'm here.
Okay. That's fine. Wait a minute. We have a commissioner might have a question for you. If you'd state your name and address, please, sir.
Gary Hall at 1232 Memphis Junction Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky, 42101. Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
So, Mr. Hall, as the development plan conditions are currently written, it would... Let me see if I got this. So, it says that vertical metal siding would be allowed as an exterior, and as they're currently written, you could build the entire house out of metal siding, and I don't think that's probably your intent. So, could we... Would you be open to limiting some of these exterior materials, or is that your intent?
During the pre-application meeting, they expressed interest in building a pole barn style home, and I believe that's why they have included that as a proposed material. Mr. Hall may want to speak to that, but I think they are actually planning to utilize that as a material.
Okay. So, it is your intent, then, to do a metal exterior similar to what you would put on a barn or that sort of thing? Do you know if it would be exposed fastener or hidden fastener?
I do not. I would think the contractor would be better off speaking of that.
Okay.
I don't. I know the location of it would be thick tree lines around the house, as far as if you're worried of appearance. I don't know that that community would be opposed to that appearance. It's a pretty country setting.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions for Mr. Hall? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or an opposition to this request? All right. Commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number 202291Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drain. Chair Warren.
Yes. Motion is approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court. Our next item is 202292Z County. Daniel Douglas and Caitlin Bowles have filed an application to rezone a portion of a tract of land containing approximately 2.10 acres located at Zero Antioch Church Road from Ag to RE Residential State with the general development plan.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting on October 6 of this year for the property highlighted in yellow. Current zoning of the property is Ag. Current land use is vacant, and the future land use designation is agriculture. There is a site plan provided for your reference. The applicants are proposing to rezone 2.10 acres located on a portion of the property at Zero Antioch Church Road from Ag to residential estate in order to subdivide the portion of the property proposed to be rezoned into two single-family residential tracts. The remaining portion of the lot is proposed to be added to an adjacent track to the north. And so, looking over to page two, with some site characteristics review, I would like to point out the transportation infrastructure. The property does have frontage on Antioch Church Road, which is a county-maintained rural local roadway with 50 feet of right-of-way and 16 feet of pavement width. And then I'd also like to point out that about 1/3 of the property contains a soil type that is classified as prime farmland, and the remaining area is not prime farmland. Looking down to the site design and compatibility review, I would like to point out the surrounding architectural features. Home sizes in the area range from about 851 square feet to 3,085 square feet, with a median home size of 1,840 square feet. Half of the homes have at least a two-car attached garage. The proposed minimum is 1,500 square feet. And then looking to the building orientation and the front setback, the existing homes are oriented to face Antioch Church Road, and the existing homes to the south are set back around 100 feet from the front property line. The proposed setback is 25 feet. Looking over to page three, and looking to the development plan conditions, number one deals with that 25-feet front building setback from Antioch Church Road. Number two looks at the minimum of 1,500 square feet. Number three, a minimum of 25% of the exterior of any new residential structure shall be constructed of brick, stone, or cementitious siding, as well as limitations on the foundation. Number four deals with sinkholes and wetlands on the property and their mitigation and avoidance. Number five looks at access to the property. Number six deals with tree preservation. And number seven, the Barren River District Health Department shall perform a site evaluation for onsite septic. Looking down to the Focus 2030 category review, I would just like to point out six for your consideration. Again, the Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area, and so the proposal may comply with LU 2. Oh, and sorry, the Planning Commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area and if it complies with LU 1.1.3. Looking over to page four, the proposal may comply with NCR 2.4. The Planning Commission should determine if the proposal will preserve and enhance the agricultural landscape and viewshed along Antioch Church Road. The Planning Commission should determine compliance with NCR 2.4.1. The proposed development is located on a roadway less than the 18-foot minimum standard for county roads. Public sanitary sewer is not available in this area. And the Planning Commission should determine if the proposed development will result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. And then finally, the proposal may comply with HN 2.1 and HN 4. The Planning Commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type and if the additional lot construction of a new residence is believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. And so, looking back to page one with some final points to consider, Antioch Church Road is again 16 feet wide, which is less than the 18-foot minimum county standard. About 1/3 of the property is designated as prime farmland. Looking to the front setback, the proposed front setback per DPC number one is 25 feet. The nearest house on the adjacent property to the north is set back about around 200 feet. And then proposed minimum home size in DPC number two is 1,500 square feet, and the average home size in the area is 1,764 square feet, and the median home size in the area is 1,840. That is all that staff have for this application, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Janie. Commissioners, any questions?
To your knowledge, does the applicant plan to have an attached garage, or is it just 1,500 square feet, no garage?
That may be best answered by the applicants.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any other questions? If one of you all would come to the microphone, please, and state your name and address, please, sir.
Daniel Douglas, 1011 Antioch Greenbrier Road.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Graham?
Mr. Douglas, do you plan to have an attached garage?
I'd be an attached two-car garage.
Attached two-car. And do you have any objection to adding that requirement to the development plan conditions? That it would be 1,500 square feet and have a two-car attached garage?
That's what we had in mind. Yeah.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Douglas, commissioners?
Yeah, so that looks like that'll be an addition to DPC number two and simply the additional requirement that a two-car freestanding garage, do we say?
An attached garage.
Attached, I'm sorry. That there will be an attached two-car garage built, and that's your agreement?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Anybody else question Mr. Douglas? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or opposition to this request? Commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number 202292Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Drain.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion is approved and go to the Warren County Fiscal Court. Our next item tonight is 202293Z County. Walton and Wanda Denham Estate, the owners, care of Cory Denham, has filed an application to rezone a portion of tract of land containing approximately 2 acres located at 2432 Plano Road from Ag to RR Rural Residential with the general development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on September 20 for the property highlighted in yellow. It's currently zoned agriculture. Current land use is agriculture, and the future land use is low-density residential. And then to resummarize, the applicants are proposing to rezone 2 acres located on a portion of the property at 2432 Plano Road in order to subdivide the existing home on a smaller lot. The remaining portion of the tract is proposed to be consolidated with the property at 526 Crossfield Way, and the applicants have provided a site plan for your review. Looking over at page two, under site characteristics review, prime farmland, the portion of the property proposed to be rezoned is designated as prime farmland. Looking at site design and compatibility review, the building orientation, front building setback, the existing home is set back roughly 100 feet, and the home to the south is set back roughly 250 feet. There is no requirement in the DPCs for an increased front yard setback as proposed. The minimum front yard setback, if this resident is ever replaced, would be 25 feet. Looking over at the area-specific policy review, the proposed development... Looking over at the area-specific policy review, the proposed development is located within the boundary of the Plano Focal Point Plan, and staff evaluated six applicable policies, and I will highlight three of them for your consideration. Looking at PL3, that addresses the building orientation and setbacks. The applicants included a requirement in DPC number one that any new home constructed on the property faced Plano Road, but applicants did not include a requirement for an increased front building setback that complements the existing front yard setbacks in this section of Plano Road. This application complies with just a portion of this policy. Looking down at PL6, this gives consideration to the building setbacks. Again, looking back at PL3, the application does not comply with this policy. Looking at PL9, deals with building materials. The existing home has a brick exterior. The applicants agreed in DPC number three that at least 25% of the exterior of any new residential structure shall be constructed of brick, stone, or cementitious siding. The planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. Looking over to the development plan conditions, number one addresses the orientation. Number two, any new primary residential structure constructed on the property shall contain a minimum of 1,600 square feet of heated space. In the event the existing home is involuntarily destroyed, the replacement residence may be built back with a smaller square footage and is not required to abide by the 1,600 square feet minimum established above. Number three addresses materials. Number four addresses sinkhole and tree preservation. Number five addresses access. Looking down at the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 12 items, and I'll highlight a few of those for your consideration. Looking at LU 1.1.3, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. The proposal may comply with LU2 and LU2.1. Planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character and pattern of development along Plano Road. Looking at page five, the application complies with some, but not all of the policies outlined in the Plano Road Focal Point Plan, and the planning commission should determine compliance with LU2.8. And then, the planning commission should determine compliance with HN1 and HN1.3, which encourages compatible infill development. Looking back at points to consider, the property is designated as prime farmland, and the existing home is setback from the front property line roughly 100 feet. The home to the north is setback around 50 feet, and the home to the south is setback roughly 250 feet. As proposed, the minimum front yard setback of the residence is, if ever replaced, would just be 25 feet. That is all the staff had for the report, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Amy, would you explain this in PL3 on page three?
Okay.
This front yard setback, what is the requirement?
Minimum 25 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, they would just be required to replace the 25 feet as in, as is, and not as the minimum setback.
Okay.
Do you have something, Angel?
Are you asking what the minimum per the ordinance is, or what the policy is suggesting?
What the policy suggests?
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Gotcha. So, in the Plano Focal Point Plan, one of the policies, PL3, it just says that future development should be sensitive to the existing pattern of development. So, in this case, we've listed the current setbacks for the existing home and homes on surrounding sides. None of those utilize a front yard setback of 25 feet. So, that's why this policy has been listed
Right.
as being, I guess, deficient as far as the setback goes.
What would be the setback? How many feet to compare it to the other residents? How many feet would that be?
So, right now, it ranges anywhere from 50 to 250. If we go back to, Amy's jumping back to the aerial view here, might get a better idea. So, if you look to the north, that home's around 50. The existing home in the yellow area, that's around 100, and then, the one to the south is around 250. So, if a 25-foot setback were utilized, then that home would stick out in front of anything that's there now.
That's my question.
As proposed, they would only be required to utilize the minimum, which is 25.
I have a couple more questions, if I may. Gosh, maybe it's late, and I'm just not following here, but I see the yellow outlined acreage, and I see an existing structure and maybe three outbuildings. And if I understand correctly, the, let's call it the everything except an acre is going to go to the adjoining property? Am I following that correctly? All right. And this adjoining property, I tell you what, can we go back to the aerial? Would it be the property that has like the circle drive?
No, it's even further back. It's not even shown on the aerial. I'm not sure. It's a little more visible.
Okay, so it's not going to the adjoining property. So, would it be, would it be fair to say that this is not a buildable lot that they're cutting off here, correct?
It will be consolidated with an existing tract
All right.
to form one lot.
Oh, okay.
It's to the rear.
Okay.
So, if you look at your land use map, it would be this property back here is going to get consolidated back to the rear. It's a pretty deep property.
Got it. Okay, and so, the conversation then that we're having is in, to deal with the possibility that this existing structure is destroyed or torn down in some way, and what would be built back in its place? Would that be accurate? All right. And so, do we know what the age of the existing structure is? To the staff's knowledge, is there a, is there a plan to tear down the existing structure? Okay. The last part, I don't, I can't quite tell from the plat, which part is going to go to the new, which part's going to be consolidated? I saw the, I see the easement lines, but I don't necessarily see the property line.
Those are probably better viewed on page eight on the zoning map. So, the area in red is what's subject to the zone change. So, everything, or, well, yeah, you can see it on this map, too. So, everything to the right of the red box, it's kind of a hatchet shape or upside-down L. Everything from there over to the square parcel at the end of Crossfield Way would be consolidated. Do you have the pointer? That might help.
Maybe if you could go to the aerial and maybe indicate it's
It's not shown on the aerial. It's zoomed
The portion that goes to the, that gets consolidated isn't shown on the aerial?
Correct, it's not shown.
She's gonna point it out there, and I'm just gonna come up there and show you. What you're missing here is a lot. That's the whole shape here so much.
Ha! I follow. So, this isn't, this is gonna stay with this residence.
Thank God.
I follow. Thank you, sorry. I couldn't tell if it was late, I just couldn't quite get there. Okay, so, I now follow. Thank you.
Joe Mee.
Okay, so, here's my last question. What's, in case this structure's torn down, what's an acceptable, what is a compatible setback?
50 feet.
What's a compatible setback with the adjoining property?
With the mirrors, everything else would be about 50 feet, wouldn't it?
Right now, everything, if we were, if we go back to the aerial, the house to the north is roughly 50, the existing home is 100, and then, the home to the south is 250. So, it'd be anywhere between 50 and 250.
Okay.
So, we would put, if applicant agreed, just put a minimum, if that house was torn down, a minimum of 50 feet from Plano Road.
It's more than 50 now, right?
Right, the existing house is 100. So, it kind of scales back from north to south.
If they built, that house was torn down, the minimum they have to, what their proposal is, 25 feet. And if we change that to 50, am I saying that correct?
Well, you all may have a difference in opinion of what would be a compatible front setback. We've just provided the range so that you could maybe weigh in on that.
So, it could be anywhere within that range, the setback?
If they were, if they were agreeable to that. Right now, it's, they're proposing just to follow the minimum, and that's 25.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Would it be, would it be inconsistent with the recommendation, staff's recommendation, to have the new home setback at least where the existing home is? So, that's gotta be 100 feet, right? Roughly?
Keep drawing on everything.
That's okay.
One minute left there, and I'll show you what we're talking about. That's right, so, you've got the home.
We're talking about this structure right here, correct?
Yeah, so, that's the existing home. And then, if you take the plane of this
Right.
that's 50 feet.
All right, so would we
And then, if you take the plane of the other house, it's roughly in line with those two two's. So, according to the policy plan, anywhere within this envelope would be
Would be acceptable.
Would be acceptable. Perfect, if you will, would be if you took the corner of that and the corner of this, and you drew that, it'd be somewhere in there, which happens to be exactly where
It's almost where the existing, the existing structure is, correct?
So, I think our recommendation would be at least this.
Yeah.
But anywhere else is okay.
But maybe, maybe just a little further. All right, very good, thank you. Sorry to take so long to figure that out.
Thank you, Amy. I think the Commissioner, is the applicant here or the representative?
Ashley Garrity, oh, I'll tell the truth.
What's your address, Ashley?
996 Wilkinson Trace.
Thank you.
And I do have with me Cory Denham, who is the heir of Wanda and Walton Denham. Basically, what he's inherited is parents' property. He's trying to keep the home and two acres for himself and add the rest of the adjoining so he can sell it.
But so, if I may, I think I understand what he's looking to do. Honestly, he's not looking to tear this structure down.
When he can testify, he has no intent to do that.
That's okay. So, given that, just so that we can do our job here, does your client have any opposition to making the setback should this structure be destroyed at least? What did we say it was now?
It's a, it's 100 now, but a minimum of 50.
Would your client be opposed to 100 feet? That's where the structure is currently sitting now.
If I can have one moment to speak with him, please.
Sure.
He has no intent to tear it down, so he's fine.
Very good, all right.
So, we scared, that means that DPC number one
Read
would now, now read, "Any new residence constructed on the property shall be oriented to face Plano Road and shall have a 100-foot front set, front building setback along Plano Road."
Yes.
Correct.
Do you, on behalf of Mr. Your client, if you agree to that?
Yes.
Lady Blighty, if I didn't have any other comments, I just come up with one.
Sure, Cory.
Mr. Denham, your name and address, please, sir?
Cory Denham, 2432 Plano Road.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do, sir.
Mr. Moore's gonna ask you a question.
Mr. Denham, did you
Yes, sir.
agree about that 100-foot setback?
Yes.
And do you agree to that?
Yes. Yep.
I do not have anything else to add.
All right, thank you, Mr. Denham, thank you, Ashley. Commissioners, any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience, excuse me, that's opposed to this request? Hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number 2022-93Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comp Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in this staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Dren.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is Rock and Grace LLC. The applicants, in suits me, three LLC owners have filed an application to rezone a tractable land containing approximately 1.99 acres located 6794 Nashville Road from Ag to RM3 Townhouse Multifamily Residential with the general development plan. Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on July the 6th for the property highlighted in yellow. Current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is single-family residential. Future land use is mixed-use residential. And just to resummarize, the applicants are proposing to rezone in order to develop the property with a maximum of 40 multifamily residential dwelling units, and they have provided a couple of site plans for your review. Looking over at the site characteristics review, prime farmland, the property contains soil types classified as prime farmland. Site design and compatibility review, surrounding densities, there is a density map in your packet. Densities for existing subdivisions in the area range from 0.81 dwelling units per acre to 18.25 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density is, for this development, is 20.10 dwelling units per acre. Looking at the proposed open space, the minimum amount of open space required in the RM3 zone is 20%, but the applicants have agreed to provide a minimum of 30% open space, and that is in DPC number six. The applicants have also proposed to install interconnecting sidewalks at at least four feet in width. And so, the application complies with the majority of these items assessed in the design. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Looking at the traffic impact study, a study was not required by KYTC in lieu that the developer install, the developer installing a raised median on Nashville Road, access to the property shall be right-in, right-out only, and the applicants have agreed to these requirements in DPC number one. So, looking at those development plan conditions, number one addresses the access. Number two establishes a maximum of 40 multifamily dwelling units. Number three outlines the building materials. Number four, no structure shall exceed two stories in height. Number five requires uniform lighting. Number six addresses open space and sidewalks. Number seven, when existing structures on the property are demolished, salvageable materials will be made available for donation to the Habitat for Humanity Restore or similar nonprofit organization. Prior to demolition, structures will be offered to local fire departments for training purposes. Looking at number eight, that addresses sinkholes. Number nine, utility service lines will be located underground. Number 10 addresses building orientation and screening. Number 11, all residential buildings on the property will be managed by a single management entity. And number 12 deals with tree preservation. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 17 items, and I'll highlight a few for your consideration. Looking at LU 1.1.3, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. The proposal may comply with LU2 and LU2.1. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. The proposal may comply with HN1 and HN1.3. The planning commission should determine determine if the proposal is a compatible infill development. And, uh, the proposal may comply with HN-two-point-one and HN-four, planning commission should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location, and if it will enhance the array of housing options, uh, in the area. And then just looking back at the points to consider, we have one, uh, a large portion of the property is designated as prom farmland. That is all we have for this staff report, would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, commissioners, any questions, uh, of Amy? Thank you very much. Is the applicant or the representative here, Mr. Brooks?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I represent the applicant. Uh, we don't have anything to add. Angela Miller is here, she's a member of Rock and Grace, can answer questions if you have any, and Jace Caldwell is the engineer, he's here, and the three of us will be happy to answer any questions you might have, but we don't have any testimony to offer.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Uh, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Brooks or Ms. Miller? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question or opposition to this request tonight? All right, hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty-twenty-two-dash-nine-four Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and actions, uh, presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner starts.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, the motion is approved, and will go to Warren County Fiscal Court for final Our next item tonight is, um, Reed Street Investments, care of Sean Miller, Dennis Bentonall, and Eli Bentall, Bentonall, excuse, apologize if I mispronounced your name, uh, have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land, uh, containing approximately five-point-five-seven acres located Kenbale Boulevard, formerly Shive Lane, for mixed-use residential. If this, uh, a few, uh, flume is approved, the next item would be Reed Street Investments, care of Sean Miller, Dennis Bentonall, and Eli Bentonall have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately point-five-seven acres located Zero Kenbale Boulevard, from light industrial and MHP Mobile Home Park to light industrial with a general development plan. If, uh, that is approved, the next item would be Reed Street Investments, care of Sean Miller, Dennis Bentonall, and Eli Bentonall have applied for a forty-foot variance from the required fifty-foot setback adjacent to a residential use on the property at Zero Kenbale Boulevard. This property is currently zoned light industrial and mobile home park. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in September for the property located on Kenbale Boulevard, formerly Shive Lane. The current zoning is LI and MHP Mobile Home Park, and the use is vacant. The future land use designation is mixed-use residential, and the applicants are proposing to amend the future land use map to industrial. Going to look at page two, uh, in reference to the future land use map amendment, at the bottom, LU one-point-one-point-four of the comprehensive plan outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. And on page three, the text, uh, the italicized text, uh, there at the top of page three, that is the information that the applicants supplied with their application to help address the findings required to amend the future land use map. And the applicants have stated that the use is clearly compatible because the property is mostly surrounded by LI-zoned property. And if we look at the attached land use map, you'll see that there are a handful of older industrial uses, but the most prevalent existing use is in the immediate vicinity of agriculture, single-family, multifamily, and commercial. The current mixed-use residential flume category applies to urbanized areas being redeveloped with the primary use as residential, where complementary commercial and services are provided in a contiguous area. Staff feels that the current flume category best matches the existing pattern of development, and the planning commission should determine if the applicants have adequately addressed the criteria to amend the flume, and if, if an amendment to industrial be, will be complementary to and compatible with the adjacent and nearby residential uses. Looking at the site plan that was submitted, uh, looking at the layout, lot size, and setback section of the site characteristics review, this is the proposed layout. Setbacks will follow the light industrial standards and the ordinance, except for a fifteen-foot setback from the adjacent residential use along the southern and eastern property line, which would be, uh, on the site plan here, would be the top and right-hand side. And in these areas, the proposed setback is fifteen feet. The typical setback required by the ordinance between industrial and residential property is fifty feet. On page four, we'll touch on the surrounding land uses. Uh, I had touched on those, uh, previously, and again noted that the existing flume is mixed-use residential. The comprehensive plan does not identify industrial uses as potentially compatible in this category, and when the flume for this area was established, it, it did not anticipate expansion of existing industrial use. Rather, the anticipation was for redevelopment of existing industrial areas and conversion into uses that are compatible with and complementary to the existing residential uses that are predominant in the area. While the proposed development plan conditions limit the use of the property to those allowed in GB, HB, and indoor storage and outdoor storage to the LI standards, there is nothing proposed in the conditions that would prohibit the following uses: eating establishment with drive-thru, active outdoor recreation and entertainment, firearm range, animal hospital, commercial kennel or veterinarian, commercial greenhouse or nursery, retail with drive-thru or pickup window, and self-service storage. The planning commission should consider if these are compatible uses, given the proposed reduction in the required setback by thirty-five feet, coupled with the proposed hours of operation of six AM to twelve AM. Looking at the surrounding architectural features, structures along Kenbale Boulevard are a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial in character. Building heights range from one to three stories. The existing three-story buildings are on the opposite side of Kenbale Boulevard and are not three stories tall. Or, sorry. The existing structures, yes, on the east side of Kenbale are not three stories tall. The residences in the Mobile Home Park are one-story, and the applicants are proposing a maximum building height of up to three stories and less within eighty feet of the southern or eastern property lines, and in this case, the maximum building height would be two stories. The planning commission should determine if the proposed building height is compatible and in keeping with the character of the area. Touching on signage, uh, the proposed development plan conditions limit freestanding signage to a maximum of fifteen feet in height, with a maximum sign-face area of one-hundred square feet. This is taller and greater in area than much of the existing freestanding signage in this section of Kenbale Boulevard. Staff suggested that the applicants consider prohibiting LED signage, considering the proximity of the proposed use to the adjacent single-family residential uses, but this was not addressed. On page five, there are ten development plan conditions. Number one outlines permitted building materials. Two looks at signage. Three requires that new utilities be underground. Four addresses sinkholes. Five looks at that building height. Uh, six looks at access. Seven deals with building orientation or screening of side and rear facades. Eight looks at those uses that I touched on a minute ago. Nine hours of operation, and ten requires a minimum of twenty percent open space. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, uh, we evaluated eleven items. We found that four of those are in compliance, and seven are for your consideration, the first being LU one-point-one-point-one and LU one-point-one-point-two, which deal with the future land use map, and LU one-point-one-point-three, which looks at compatibility. On the next page, we referenced LU two, which looks at compatibility and quality of development, and also the character of the area and protection of the character of the area. Jumping down to HN-one and HN-one-point-three, which looks at character and pattern of development and the impact on the existing residential uses that are located adjacent to the site. And then below that, reference to ED-three, which, uh, deals with economic development. Below that, there's a reference to the variance application. Uh, the applicants have requested a variance in conjunction with the future land use map amendment and zone change. And so you'll see section four-seven-three-C, which requires an additional setback adjacent to any residential use when you're developing industrial property. And the ordinance requires a fifty-foot setback from any adjacent residential use, and the applicants are requesting a thirty-five-foot variance for the required setback to be thirteen, fifteen feet along the southern and eastern property lines. KRS one-hundred-two-four-three outlines the findings necessary for granting a variance, and the applicants supplied the narrative at the bottom of page six in the italicized text to speak to these findings. And on page seven, the staff has a few points for your consideration in reference to the variance request. The lot is not exceptionally narrow, and it is not in odd shape. There are no exceptional topographic conditions or extraordinary or exceptional situations regarding the subject property to where the strict application of the dimensional requirements would cause exceptional and undue hardship upon the owner of such property. The variance exhibit that was submitted depicts a roughly six-thousand-four-hundred-square-foot building envelope that can be utilized, and that is in compliance with the required setbacks without needing a variance. This is larger in area than the minimum lot size required in the LI zone. And last, the applicant's justification statement for the variance relates to the use of the operation of the property and not the land itself. I will wrap up on page one with our points to consider. Number one, the applicants have requested a flume amendment, zone change, and variance in order to accommodate their proposed development. Number two, uh, the variance requested is due to the proximity to an adjacent single-family residential use. On the backside, uh, proposed hours of operation are six AM to twelve AM, and permitted uses include, uh, the things that I had referenced earlier in the staff report listed there for your reference. Below that, you'll find a reference to the maximum building height that is proposed of three stories. Again, three stories, three-story buildings that are in proximity to this development are on the opposite side of Kenbale Boulevard, south and west of the property. And the existing structures on the east side of Kenbale Boulevard are not three stories tall. The residences in the Mobile Home Park are one-story. And then the last point to consider relates to signage. Uh, again, the signage that is proposed is taller and greater in area than much of the existing freestanding signage in this area, and staff suggested, uh, due to the proximity to the single-family adjacent residential uses, that the applicants prohibit LED signage. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, commissioners, any questions for the staff report?
Only have one, um, related to the uses, usage of the areas.
Yes, sir.
Firearms range, I assume that's the indoor.
It would be indoor, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, uh, approximation of what percentage signage size is in that area?
They're not fifteen feet tall. They're probably closer to like eight or ten. There's an LED sign across from this property, um, when we looked for record of that actually being properly permitted, we could find no record that there's a permit on record for that sign. So I guess if you take that one out of the equation, uh, going closer to Middle Bridge Road, that signage is gonna be shorter than fifteen feet.
And sign-face?
And, yeah, and the sign-face area is, is not that large either.
And this is a monument-style sign that they're requesting?
Uh, I don't believe they've specified a style. Uh, I also, and to be fair, I don't think the existing signage is monument-style, uh, that's in that corridor.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or the representative here, please?
Good evening again, Chris Davenport, ninety-one, nine-twenty-one College, and again, I swear to tell the truth. Uh, I have Mr. Sean Miller's here, Jace Caldwell, the engineer's here. Uh, first of all, this is a little different application, uh, than what we're accustomed to seeing. Trying to get the right part of the, well, there, there's what I'm looking for. So, uh, the property is outlined in red. The requested zoning is LI, and the, you'll see that the vast majority of the property is already LI, which is a little bit odd. Um, the, the sliver of the property that's Mobile Home Park is what we need to rezone. And you can't rezone that to LI to much the rest of the property without getting a flume, 'cause it's kind of this odd circumstance that the property's currently, it currently has a light industrial zoning, but a less intense mixed-use, um, flume, I think. Is it flume, is it mixed-use or? Yeah, mixed-use residential flume. So, uh, what you don't know is that Bentall Brothers is the business next door, and so Reed Street Investments is the holding company for that entity. They own this property, they do business out of the adjoining property. And what they intend to do with this property is basically the use will be ancillary to their current business. They need, uh, storage on this property, and they need to improve their tractor-trailer delivery traffic. Uh, right now, as I understand it, from Mr. Miller, wh- when they get deliveries, their business is exterior building facade materials, siding is what they sell, and, uh, right now, the delivery system is not ideal. Let's just put it that way. Uh, I think it even hinders the traffic flow on, I still call it Shive Lane, I guess I'm gonna have to start calling it Kenbale Boulevard. So, uh, I used, you know, this is basically, folks, where that extension's gonna go through. You see the groundwork happening across old Middle Bridge Road right now. So what they're proposing is, they like for all this to be LI. Uh, if I go to the concept, you can see the demarcation there, um, and what they are proposing is basically two structures. These will be, uh, storage buildings, basically, that are allowed in LI, light industrial. And then the, the reason they're configured this way is they want that trap, that, uh, tractor-trailer traffic to be able to service this lot and the lot that would be to the left of this lot. Now, I think there's some trade-offs here, and this, this application kind of reminds me of a couple weeks ago, maybe a month ago, I was here with a bypass property that had a sliver of old R-two on the back of it, uh, that the developer wanted to put a inside, indoor self-storage, and we were cleaning that up. And if you remembered, there was discussion, for those of you that were at that hearing, well, why don't they just use the piece that they can use? Because there's no question right now, my client could use the LI portion of this property for the uses they're proposing. The issue with that is, mainly as I understand it, their preferred access point splits that zoning line. And that's the biggest thing that, to them, that's what they want to overcome. So what, what they're proposing here, when they move the whole property to LI, I think there are some benefits that I want to point out. With this rezoning, if it, if the flume is amended and the rezoning happens, number one, the, the amount of uses will be lowered. The amount of uses that would be allowed would be GB and HB with some restrictions, and the only light industrial use would be the light industrial storage. All other light industrial uses go away, which they're not currently restricted on the existing eighty-something percent of the property. Number two, uh, hours of operations become restricted. So, so what I'm trying to compare for you folks is, there's currently light industrial on the vast majority of the property with no restrictions, no hours of operation, no material restrictions, no height restrictions, no use restrictions. By bringing the rest of this property into LI, those restrictions would be placed upon it. I hope I haven't made that more convoluted than, than I needed to. So again, the, the, and I'll say this from the outset, the signage isn't that important to them, okay? Uh, the reason, as the attorney, I've included some signage, and it is monument-style in the restriction, want to point that out. The reason I've included some signage to them is, as an attorney, I try to plan a little bit down the road. And if fifteen or twenty years from now Bentall Brothers sells this parcel, okay, that buyer may want to sign. And I, I always tell my clients, why make that person come back to change a restriction if you don't have to? That's not in the foreseeable future. But frankly, a monument style of that size, I didn't find to be objectionable. We can, we can make it smaller if the commissioner thinks it is, if the commission does. So I- So I think there is some give and take here, restricting signage, restricting the hours of operation, requiring additional screenage, exterior materials or very high materials used here. The current LI doesn't have any of those restrictions. Originally, my client wanted both of those structures to be three stories in height, and frankly, what we did was, we moved that variance, we moved that variance from 10 feet to 15 feet to accommodate the better landscaping buffer, and we made that structure two stories. So it's a little bit convoluted, but any structure within 80 feet of those property lines cannot be more than two structures. So again, that is, that is trying to put the more intense, the higher structure in the front and farther away from the Mobile Home Park. I've thrown a lot at you, so you probably have some questions.
Well, the only thing I want to negotiate here is the sign. You're exactly right. I've been there, they've got, they've got a nice business, but a truck cannot load and unload there. If you're going to Win Nelson, you gotta stop and wait for the, the truck's gonna be literally sitting out the road, because he can't back in there. I see what they're trying to fix, and it makes perfect sense to me. This is a question for staff. What is a, what is a good compromise on sign size?
I don't know. I'm just throwing this out there, just based on what's there now. It's, it's definitely not 100 square feet. I'd say probably 50, probably half of that, just based on what's there now.
Fair enough. Chris, would your client agree to 50 square feet?
I think so. Let me talk about the height, too.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. I don't want to.
And I would think 10 feet, but I'll just say, they know more about this than I. Is 10 and 50 a somewhat recognizable scale? Okay, let me check those dimensions. That'd be fine.
That's all I have.
So, number two, change 15 to 10 and 100 to 50.
Chris, I got a question about hours of operation. This property butts up right into somebody's back door in that Mobile Home Park, and it's got hours of operation out to 12:00 a.m. Now, they're not currently operating.
Oh, they're not. Then, and Commissioner Brown, that kind of goes to the point about the sign. I always kind of advise my clients, leave that flexibility for GB or HB businesses in the future, but, I mean, if that's something, I'm happy to talk to him about that, too, if that's, because they're certainly not open those hours currently.
Clean it up and make it a lower number, and then if we have to amend it in the future, that's.
Just a minute. So, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. I'm sorry, to 8, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., correct?
That'd be fine.
And Monday, seven days a week.
Any other questions for Mr. Davenport? Mr. Davenport, if you would call your client up to agree to these changes. Yes, sir, if you would state your name and address, please.
Sean Miller, 15 Reed Street.
You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Sean, did you hear the, the additional restrictions about the hours of operation being 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and then the sign being restricted to 10 feet in height and 50 square feet in sign face?
I did.
You agreeable with those?
I do.
And you'll sign those when I give them to you?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone in the audience who has a question or an opposition to this request tonight? Hearing none, commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
Excuse me, our first, our, we got three motions. Our first motion would be the flume amendment.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 2022-26 flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU 1.1.4 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Chair Warren.
Motion's approved. Our next motion would be to, to change from light industrial in Mobile Home Park to light industrial with the general development plan.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number 2022-96Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes.
Chair Warren.
Yes.
Motion approved. The next motion would be for approval of a 40-foot variance from the required 50-foot setback adjacent to the property on zero Kenbell Boulevard.
I make the motion to approve the request for a variance at Kenbell Boulevard, docket number 2022-V25, a variance of 35 feet to allow the proposed structure for an industrial use to be located 15 feet from the adjacent residential property. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that the granting of this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or a nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, the last two motions from light industrial and mobile harm, mobile home to light industrial, and the variance will go to, the, the light industrial will go to the Bowling Green City Commission, and the, the variance was Planning Commission final action. Our next two items tonight are the city-county planning commission's filed an application to readopt and amend various elements of the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan.
Ms. Hurd?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We just have a short, three-hour presentation for y'all, if that's okay.
Go ahead and just make it 3:05. Just, yeah.
I'm kidding. Actually, we'll keep this brief. I know it's been a long night. We sent out our memo with the packet. Hopefully, you've had time to review the videos and all of that information. This has been a long time coming, after months and multiple meetings with.
And a tornado.
And a tornado, and consultation with community members, sister-agency staff. Basically, we're here tonight to present our recommended amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. The summary of changes in your packet hopefully did a decent job outlining those changes. To be honest, most of those were housekeeping items, or really just updating data to reflect current numbers. The most notable changes are probably, well, they are, in the future land use section. And the goal of these changes, we, we basically, we amended some of the category descriptions, and the goal with some of the future land use map amendments that are proposed this evening, too, is to allow a greater flexibility for applicants in the future in hopes of reducing the number of future land use map amendments that come before you all. These, hopefully you were able to review those during the last week on the video, but I can open up the map if anyone has any questions specifically about those future land use map amendments that are proposed, if the internet will cooperate. Here it goes. And I'll also mention, one thing that's not really, what did I?
Not the work.
Oh, yeah, that'll do it. One thing that's not entirely apparent when you look through the summary of changes and at the map are some changes to the text where we see quite often future land use map amendments that come in here for, it's usually just agda RE out in the county, might be a landowner wanting to parcel off two or three lots for their kids or their grandkids, and, and rather than just paint a sea of rural density residential or strip of rural density residential out every main artery in the county, we tried to write in an exception, basically in LU 1.1.4, that if you are proposing to zone property from a parent tract that has existed since July 1, 2001, which also correlates to our, some of our zoning ordinance dates and exceptions for that, that basically you wouldn't need a flume amendment at that point. You'd be limited to no more than four lots, and we proposed to tie it to that simply because four is the max before triggering additional fire hydrants or additional infrastructure. So we thought that was kind of a reflection of, of what you all have been approving to date anyway, as far as the future land use map amendments go. So it's kind of our hope in just changing the text and not necessarily the map, that that would just be potentially allowed in ag, flume-designated areas.
I thought it was an exceptional change, because they, most of the farmers don't, they don't want to come here anyway. They're just trying to give their kids a couple of lots, and how many of those do we have? A lot of them.
Lot.
I can't think of one that's been controversial. So I think it's a well-received change.
Glad to hear it.
I think those are about a third of our future land use map amendments we see anyway.
Yeah, there's a lot of them. And it took me a while to figure out why they were even having to come here. I know I must have asked you that question like five times before I finally got it. So, so, yeah, I think it's a very, very welcome change.
Do you have anything else to add, or are there questions?
I just had, while you're thinking, lots of questions for her, or me, but the small
cities, we did not have time to add, to, to dedicate the, the attention they deserve at this point in time. So we are gonna follow up with them as we go through our approval processes and take a look at their focal point plans. I think three of them have focal point plans. I don't believe Plum Springs does.
Springs does not have a focal point plan.
Does not, so we'll have to look at that. But Smith Grove does, Woodburn does, and, and Oakland does, and we will be looking at updating those focal point plans specifically, and then asking them about the policies that are associated with those areas, making the tweaks to reflect the new, not only city limits, but the new expanded areas as well. And we've got to start on Woodburn. I'm gonna start on, try to do Oakland next, and then Smith Grove, we're kind of waiting on the outcome and the results of a current transportation study that's going on that is associated mostly with the interchange, but the transportation circulation through Smith Grove. So as we come with the approvals to those areas, we will be asking them to take a look at the, those focal point plans, and we'll be updating those as well. So their approvals may come just a little bit later, but plan on trying to get that knocked out as, as quickly as we can in the first part of the year.
I don't have, I, I watched the videos. I thought you guys did a great job with it. I, I don't have any additional questions.
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to compliment staff on, on undertaking such a task, because it does help mitigate things that, that could be a hindrance in the future.
Some of those small cleanups were just, it's a lot of what we do here, and, and if, just by doing some of those things, you're gonna make the process a whole lot easier, I think.
So I guess from here, what kind of happens is, in some instances, so the text that's, that's changing, that is not a goal, objective, or action item, and then the future land use map is technically a final action by the planning commission, but we're gonna go ahead and take the whole package to each legislative body and, and make sure they, that it's readopted in whole as the community. So the, the update cycle by, by state laws every five years. Of course, we make changes to that periodically if we need to, but hopefully, this will set us up for the next five to 10 years, which is the rest of the life of the plan, and certainly in five years, we'll take a good, hard look at it again, depending on our growth, depending on how much we grow, how much changes, we, we, we'll start needing to probably think about doing a new comprehensive plan, which is a lot of money and a whole different process, but certainly for the next five years.
Volunteer to not be on that committee.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, well, hopefully, it won't be so, so, I guess, involved next time. We'll make sure we do our, the best job we can involved.
I say that jokingly. You guys have done a fantastic job with it.
But so, so hopefully, this will carry us through the next five years and beyond, but certainly, as we approach 2030, the community needs to think about, in my opinion, rewriting the entire concert, comprehensive plan, but also rewrite the entire zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations to, to modernize a lot of, of what we're looking at. So it'll be a, be a, a big undertaking when we get to that point, but we feel like this is a, good changes, solid changes, and, and will certainly take us through the next five years.
Well done.
All right, do we have a mo, this calls for a motion.
Well, we, yes.
Is this a written motion that we're supposed to read, or is this just a motion to the staff?
It would be, it would be a motion to readopt and amend the.
Someone care to read it, because I don't have it in front of me.
Before we make the motion, just for purposes of the record, would you please ask if there's anybody here who'd like to speak to this?
Is there anyone in here, ma'am, do you have any questions? All right, thank you very much. So if someone would read that motion, I don't have my copy.
I make the motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan. My motion is based on the findings of fact and the testimony presented in this public hearing that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment meets the requirements of the Kentucky Revised Statutes, Chapter 100, and more specifically, KRS 100.183 through KRS 100.197. Further, I request that the findings of fact and recommendation be sent to all legislative bodies of Warren, Warren County, Kentucky, and includes summary of the evidence and testimony presented by the proponents and/or opponents of the proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion's approved, and will go to all the Warren County legislative bodies. If someone would make a motion on the future land use map amendment for the various properties.
I make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU dash 1.1.4 of the Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drane.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion approved. It's a final action by the planning commission. Any other discussion items tonight, Ben?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes, thank, hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. Staff, thank you for all you, all you did, and appreciate everybody being here tonight. Thank you.